Okay, we're ready.
Okay.
I was focusing on my share.
No, I know.
I did not think that Mary wasn't coming, but I don't know. So I think they should be. All right. So we are going to call our October 10th, 2019 school committee meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Thank you for working with us as there were some technical considerations to get in order. And thank you for getting us in order. Over there. So we actually, we have approval of prior meeting minutes. We have...
Do you have the video thing?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I keep forgetting about that now, which I'm staring at it. So we are video recording this meeting, so everyone is aware. That's a public requirement to make sure you know this. It's also at the top of your agenda, just so you can see that language in Mass General Law. And also, we just asked if anyone else is recording the meeting or screaming that you just let everyone else know, everyone's aware. And you can do that by indicating, by raising your hand, but it doesn't look like it. Very good. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us. We, I'm going to move into the second agenda item, which is approval of prior meeting minutes. And in relation to that, we have been working on a structure for making sure all the meeting minutes are taken care of. We have a very lovely chart that Colleen created, that I was salivating over as the project, the project manager meeting was very excited about it, so that we are going to be very clear moving forward as far as when things are ready, when they're approved, where they're going to be, including for the executive session minutes. We're going to get that all in order. But there's the, right now, we have, by next meeting, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, we'll have the June 4th that were recorded, that no one was there to be able to, she's doing those from the recording, and then, which we appreciate you're doing. And then we'll also be able to, at that point, pull up any hard copies of executive session minutes that we have and backtrack from there for those as best we can, so we can fill those in on the table as well.
So that will be by the next meeting. So for today, we do not actually have any meetings, minutes that we need to approve. So I'm going to move into the third item, which is the chairperson's report. And I don't have a lot for today. I know that interim superintendent Rickson is going to be saying a few things about the many things that have been happening in the district recently. I am grateful that you're both here tonight to share the presentation. I know, Mike, that you came from Nature's Classroom, so we appreciate your doing that drive to be here. And I also would like to say that there's been a lot of movement, and that you'll see later in the agenda, what's on the agenda is the superintendent search, and there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work for that. We're also working to set up, we have some based-on meetings that we've been having. I know that there's a bunch of policy considerations, and I'm sure that we're going to be bringing up in the policy subcommittee, and for the communication subcommittee, and getting that going, looking at that communication plan. So we've been taking notes as we go from meetings for how we prioritize when we get into subcommittees. And we're also have, we're done finalizing, we have our final goal, so that we can then now move into having our interim superintendent evaluation based on school committee goals and the strategic goals for the year for the school. And we're also, this year, looking towards longer-term goals for, and that's all based on trainings that we've been having with M, with the MASC. I was going to say MCAS. Mixing up my letters. So, in any case. And we also had been working on and have completed, looking at, not completed, forgive me for saying that word, because that's not correct. We've done the part we needed to, to be able to allow the RFQ to move forward in relation to the Green Meadows School for the envelope study that will, right now, be related to particularly the entire roof, and looking at that, ensuring the soundness of that. So that is moving forward, and everyone is on the same page, and we were able to be at the Board of Selectmen meeting to be able to, and they were gracious, to be able to have a conversation with us and move that forward. So that has also happened since we last met. And I think that I am going to...
And it was, RFQ has been put out there? Do you know?
No, it has not been put out there yet. But they now have very clear what they're going to, and I do know that the new DPW director was going to be working with the town administrator to help move that forward, make sure that that gets taken care of.
Have they hired a new person? A new DPW director?
Yeah, they have a DPW director. They do not have yet a facilities manager.
Well, I would imagine that that person is going to hire that.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah.
Great. That's awesome.
Yeah. So I think that that is all that I wanted to report out on. Yep. But before we move forward, there was a request, a request in the agenda to potentially move one of the items, and I wanted to both bring that to the attention of the board, for us to be able to consider, and to consider other consideration in relation to the request. There was consideration, so Mike needs to get back for late bedtime for Nature's Classroom. However, we have, in the order of the agenda, we're still kind of working out our process. So we are, we'll try to do, we learn every time we do it, and this is only, I think, the third one that you helped put together. So we, as things stand right now, we have the CPAC report out, is before the school improvement plans and strategic plan, MCAS report out, and they were hoping to switch those so that Mike could get back, so that he could be a part of that full conversation. So I don't know if, I'm sorry?
Can we just take a vote?
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know, I just, I did want to check in because the people that are doing the, first for two things. One, anyone that's doing the CPAC presentation, make sure that that works, because there are other considerations at play for anyone that's coming to the meetings and their lives. So that was one thing. And then also, people that are here to watch the presentations, to ensure that that works for the folks that may have been coming, and then we're going to leave right after CPAC. So I did want to just check in with the presenters and see what your thoughts were.
Madam Chair, we can keep the presentations in the order they're in.
You think that that will work okay? Okay. Okay. All right. Then we'll keep them as they are, and we appreciate your doing the drive.
Seventeen miles.
All right. Very good. So then we're going to move on to the students' report out. And who's Patrick Patton doing today? Awesome. Thank you.
Hello. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was AVM. So for, let's see, last week, we announced the host for the telethon. Those are on our website, actually, no, they're not, but, they're not actually anywhere, but confidential, secret. But they've been announced, they've had their first meeting. So they're going, they're getting ready. They'll be publicized on our website, wvm.org/telethon, once we get our publicity together for the telethon, and I'm sure we'll post it on our normal account later. And we announced our tech crew as well. And so there's 23 of us, Talal's the captain, along with myself, so it's going to be a good time. We had a meeting last night for telethon prep, and we invited all of the general staff, and we talked about expectations and some deadlines and stuff. Good stuff. Also about AVM, follow-up to Mr. Tasha Rivera, they had the AVM Friends Meeting on October 1st, was it? October 2nd, beginning of October, in relation, and a big agenda item was inclusivity with the mother-son luau and the father-daughter dance. And so we had some representatives from both sides, and they, they had a good discussion about what inclusivity means and what it means to people, and how they, it's, people don't fit into a cookie-cutter life. And so that was discussed for probably an hour, 45 minutes. It was a very long discussion. It was very civil, as you'd imagine. It was very good. And they basically, it's still up to the Friends, and they said they were going to think about it. Nothing was concrete, but they certainly said that they would be up to change and would stress inclusivity. Maynard Fest was last weekend, so there was a bunch of people represented from Maynard High School at the Maynard Fest event. So we had WAVM, and we were broadcasting on radio from 9:00 to 2:00 on the Saturday. And then Latin Club, some other clubs were there, doing some fundraisers and spreading the word about their activities. And then Jazz Band also performed at Maynard Fest for the community. NHS, so this is Talal's territory, but I'll report for him. They're in charge of homecoming, so that's been scheduled for the Friday night before Thanksgiving. And I think Talal, am I right with the theme is New England in the Fall? Was that?
Fall.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's not official yet. Okay. Shouldn't have said that. But they were still working on a theme. And their induction will be on November 22nd. Seniors are feeling the stress lately. Early action deadlines are often on the 1st of November, so people are scrambling to get their Common App ready, get their guidance recommendations, have guidance meetings, and get teacher recommendations, as well as other recommendations that colleges may need. And in senior project, we've been stressing, we've taken a break on our research curriculum and focused on Common App and like after high school. Next week is Wednesday night, the Jazz Band and Wind Ensemble will not have a normal rehearsal, but instead will be doing yoga. And it's a special class for musicians, learning to do yoga increases their breathing ability and helps strengthen their core, which is actually used to play instruments. The band is currently planning to play at an away football game, because we missed so many football games because of the Saturday moving, moving the games to Saturday. So we're trying to make up some and try and get, have a good time at a different high school on a Friday night. And NHS, and, yeah, NHS was at Financing Our Future Night, and so that was a really good event for them. I know the people who are running it said they learned a lot, and I learned a lot, I was there as well. It was really great to be involved. Any questions?
I just wanted to share that after your presentation at our last meeting, I went on the master schedule, because I thought it was, like, oh, of course, they have a master schedule with all the things you're videoing. And I loved, it was just, we get a lot of questions about when videos are going to get posted, and I love that there's a place that the community can go to, to see all the different things that WAVM records, and what your, who owns that, what bucket. So I just wanted, I know you guys talked about organization, but that is, it's a really great tool. So I just wanted, I think it's very useful. I certainly would love to, you know, share that a little bit more, so the community sees all the different videos that you guys are working on, and when the expectation would be to post it. But I just, I loved seeing that, so thank you for highlighting that in your presentation.
Thank you.
I guess, well, two things. One, I just want to applaud your responsiveness to have that conversation around inclusivity and consider that conversation. So I appreciate that. And then also, just wondering, as far as the financing, I had gone last year and loved sitting at a table and being able to have NHS be the ones running it. Is there anything that you could say that was useful to learn from it? I don't want to put you on the spot if nothing comes to mind, but...
Like what I learned, what I liked about it?
Yeah, yeah.
There's so many more factors. I mean, like, this is kind of my senior project, so I kind of know a good amount, but there are like a lot of different factors that people don't consider. And the second night of seeing Maynard's numbers and compared to other districts, that was very exciting, insightful too, because, you know, you don't really think about it that way.
The strategic planning, do you mind saying a little more about that one?
Sure. Yeah, so it was a follow-up to the first one, Financing Our Future. And it was basically kind of the same thing, but with Maynard's numbers. So it was cool to see how we were compared to other districts, as well as the state. And we talked about things that surprised us, things we didn't think aligned with our expectation. And we kind of had a discussion about where the money should be going, and where it is going, and how we think we should spend it, but how we actually need to spend it, or how we are spending it, but, yeah. It's very complicated, but it was very interesting, for sure.
Thank you. So your senior project is?
Financing public schools.
Awesome.
Yeah. So we're going to be working together.
He's interning with internships.
Oh, wow. Cool. So you're going to solve everything for us by the end of the year?
100%, yeah.
He's going to create the budget.
Yeah. No pressure.
Terrific. It was great to hear.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Very good. And we're going to move on. And next, we have interim superintendent report.
Yep. I'll talk a little bit about Financing Our Future. We had two Financing Our Future budget presentations. One was on October 3rd, and the other was on October 7th, and it was run by the NHS. They ran tables for us to let community members who were interested in finding out how school budgets are made, and what the resources we have, and how money is allocated. So it was a very successful night. I would say total, both nights, maybe 20, 20 people attended, so that was a good night. A lot of exciting things happened at the high school. This week, we had some special visitors from Spain. It's one of our sister schools. This program is primarily organized by Jen Adams and assisted by Mary Finnegan. So I want to thank Jen and Mary for bringing this amazing experience to the Maynard High School. On Tuesday, Maynard High School welcomed a group of 18 students and two teachers from our sister school in Tamara, Spain. So far, the students have been having a blast getting to know each other in the area, and they walked around Walden Pond and learned about Thoreau. They canoed in the Concord River, and they took part in spaghetti night. They had a pickup soccer game, and they toured the Massachusetts State House and met Senator Jamie Eldridge. They went to the Boston Museum of Science, and they toured Harvard University and attended some classes at the high school. Their biggest highlight was riding the big yellow school bus, so they really got a taste of New England and their host families as they participated in typical activities like the Maynard Fest. They went to a football game and other events. Monday, they're going to, I think that was this week, right? Yeah. They went to Plymouth Plantation, because I did this last week, and they went to the Cranberry Bog with their students. In April, the students from Tamara's will reciprocate, and they will host 18 of our students. So stay tuned for report on that. Next week, October 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there'll be an open house for eighth graders and their families to celebrate Maynard. And this is intended to show the great things that are happening at Maynard High School. So these activities will include a student panel, question-and-answer session, tours, a pasta dinner, and things like that. So any eighth graders, let's like to see all on Wednesday. Fowler, we had student council elections. There was 18 students who ran for office, and Megan Sykes won for presidency this year. We honored John Barbaragola right before a student council speech. He administered, he is one of our custodians, he administered the hymn movement to one of our students. We honored him, but unfortunately, he did not want to be any more honored. This is all I can do. He was not interested in anything else, so I did want to mention it. But thank you, John. He had a little presentation on, clearly it was Monday morning, and his parents came in and we thanked him. So he was very, very humble, and he just said, I did what I had to do, but I don't want to be recognized anymore. So if you see him, just say hi. Okay. Maynard Fire Department met with fourth graders this week to talk about fire safety, and they met with Captain Parr with each of the five classrooms for about 30 minutes. He's coming back on October 22nd to meet with the fifth graders. Seventh graders are at Nature's Classroom right now with Mr. Barth. He's having a great old time. He'll tell you all about it. Fowler kicked off a club time on Thursday afternoons with about 40 students showing up for the first week. They did Roblox, Dungeons and Dragons, and Cartoon Club, and students are looking to create even more clubs in the future, so stay tuned for that. Fowler joined the Math Olympiad, and it will support two teams this year, an elementary and a middle school team. And contests are held four times a year throughout the year, and Fowler's planning on sending a team to a competition in Burlington in May. Kindergarten theme this week was fall. The students went on nature walks. They were so cute, walking around with their little clipboards, taking notes of colors. It was the cutest thing, honestly. So they were looking at, talking about Johnny Appleseed and celebrating his birthday. They created puppets and created stories using the puppets. They made apple, they made applesauce in one of the classrooms that I was very happy to try. That was fun. So the social emotional learning in the elementary was focused on kindness this week, and they read "We Are Kind" by Susie Capozzi, and they gave examples to each other of how to be kind. At the central office, we are beginning the process of searching for a new technology director, and there's a screening committee. Staff received emails about that. The search committee responsible for reading the resumes of candidates, selecting candidates for the interviews, creating and reviewing interview questions, and interviewing applicants. And then the timetable for the search has been determined for, they'll meet on Wednesday, October 23rd, and then finally, to interview the candidates on October 30th. So if you're interested in joining the screening committee, just contact Colleen Andrade, and I don't know you're interested in that. We'd love to have, and the more the merrier. Okay. And that's all I have. That was a big one this month, this week. There we go.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry. The search committee for the tech director, is there anyone, and I've heard some towns do this sometimes, might use consultation, like solicit other tech folks to be part of that, or the town?
Stephen said he would come back and help us with the survey.
Oh, good.
So, yeah. He's already offered. So I got a contact, I contacted his new employer, and...
Oh, that's awesome.
He was supposed to come, we were doing the 16, but we moved the timetable a little bit, so he said he would be happy to come back, because we are not really sure of what question.
Well, that's what I know is such an area of expertise that...
Well, we do have our IT department on the committee as well.
Great.
But Stephen did say he would come back and help us.
Awesome. That's very gracious of him. What do you thank him for?
I will be happy to do that. His last day's tomorrow. So sad.
Yeah. Thank him for what he's done too, if he could, on our behalf. Thank you. So we are now moving into citizens' comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, just ask that you come onto the microphone and say who you are and what you'd like to say. Okay. Then we are going to move into the new person, the newber. The new superintendent induction program. So we have John Brackett here. Thank you for coming. Who's going to help us, walk us through the, there's a new program that they're offering that, for, that they offer for new superintendents to help them to learn the ropes. So it'd be great if you could give us a sense of what that's like.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to be with you tonight. I thought, is this generational? The student has notes on an iPhone.
Yeah.
I have notes on a piece of paper. It is not because of technologies, because I can't see, I try on iPhone, right? So, so, thanks for the opportunity. I'm John Brackett. I'm a coach in the new superintendent's induction program, and I'm really happy to be able to serve as Mary Jane's coach through this program. We specifically use the word "coach" as opposed to "mentor." Mentor implies that we, it's somebody you would go to when you need somebody to tell you what to do. As a coach, we spend our time trying to help draw out the talents that the superintendent already possesses, and help them think through these issues. So it really is their growth and their program. So it's kind of somewhat semantics, but in effect, it really isn't. It's really intentional. I served as a superintendent of schools for 22 years, and eight of which were just down the road in Sudbury. I also spent some time in Michigan as a coach, and, excuse me, as a superintendent. And I did a couple of interims after, which, by the way, I said I would never do. And kind of to full disclosure, I wish this program would have been available to me when I started. I know some of my rookie mistakes I could have avoided. I know that I would have been able to get on with teaching and learning and focusing on that much sooner as a result of the coaching and the program. I realized that I spent a lot of time early on doing things that I thought were urgent, but in retrospect, were really not important. So if you think about all of the things that are on the plates of superintendents, there's a lot of things that seem to be urgent, but in the scheme of student learning, they're really not important, and I spent a lot of time doing that. So that's one of the things that we look at. And I would have probably understood the importance of relationships in leadership, relationships with all kinds of constituencies in the district. So that's, again, those are some of the aspects of the program, and I wish I would have had it, because it would have made my onboarding much easier. As, as I call us, recovering superintendents who serve as coaches and facilitators in this program, we realized a long time ago that entry and onboarding new superintendents was a huge void in this state. And all across the state, superintendents would come into their first job, and some would come in from the assistant superintendency and think, I've got this. I know, I know the district, I know the community. It's very different when you wear that other hat. And so we knew the complexity. We knew the constant changing demands and higher expectations and everything that was on the plate. So 10 years ago, the state and the Mass Association of School Superintendents came together to develop this program. And it's been, this is our 10th cohort. We have 18 this year in the program. Last year, we had 41. It was a big blip last year. So, and the goal of the program is really quite simple. Our goal is to work with the superintendents for three years to help them become successful superintendents. That's the goal. The objectives in the program are to further develop their leadership skills by supporting their efforts to think and act strategically. What we mean by that is we really encourage new superintendents to go slow to go fast. Goes back to that issue I mentioned about trying to put out all the fires and all of the whack-a-moles. We really try to work with superintendents to think more strategically as they approach their work. We also recognize that we're not oblivious to the urgency that exists in every district across the state about things that come up and things that need to be done, and roofs that need to be fixed, that you have to address to help students learn. So even though we're trying to kind of slow things down so that it's a more direct and thoughtful and mindful approach to leadership, we also recognize there's, there's other things that need immediate attention. So we're trying to make sure that the superintendent really focuses on the instructional core, that is, teachers, students, and content. Those things working together result in a high-performing school district. We also, another objective, is to try to get the district's work focused on teaching and learning. As you know, I don't need to tell you as school committee members how many different ways you are pulled. We try to bring that back and center that to the most important part of what we think schools are about, and that's helping kids learn, both cognitively and socially. That starts with a well-developed entry plan and a report out of those findings that then lead to information that help develop a long-term strategic improvement plan. And the third, the third objective is to help build the leadership capacity in the district and within the buildings. And we do that by helping the superintendent build and think about the importance of building effective relationships with school committee, administrators, staff, the community, and the unions. One of the things I wanted to mention here is that although Mary Jane is currently in an interim status, our expectations for her in this program are no different than any other first-year superintendent. We're assuming that you didn't hire somebody to, as one, one person told me when I did the interim, oh, all you have to do is shake hands and kiss babies, right? We're assuming that's not what you want from your superintendent. So she's an active participant, and she's going to all the meetings, she's completing an entry plan, which you will see shortly, and she'll report on her findings, and she'll have an amount of information... And she'll report on her findings, and she'll have an amount of information, important information, you'll see the data, that can help inform a strategic improvement plan. So what's a part of it? That, what's part of the program is that there are eight full-day conferences, which we call Content Days, that has a focused curriculum and has a number of work products. So on those Content Days, all of the new superintendents come together. We meet at a location in Marlboro. We all come together, and all the coaches are together for about an eight-hour day. In addition to that, I will spend six hours, at least six hours a month, with Mary Jane, and we've been doing that since August. Part of that is going to be visiting schools with her and the principals to visit classrooms and look at instruction and learning going on. My role in those visits are to give her feedback, not to critique the classroom or the principal. It's, it's helping with feedback to her as she provides growth and feedback to the, to the principal. I'll also be observing leadership team meetings, coming to school committee meetings. It's highly likely you'll see me at a couple more, where I, I will again provide her with feedback on leadership, relationships, and technical aspects as, as necessary. And then finally, I'm available to her virtually 24/7, by phone, text, email, whenever she feels it's necessary. So I thank you for the opportunity to share this, and I thank you very much for your willingness to allow her to participate in this, what we think is a very important growth program for our superintendents. So I'd be happy to answer more questions about the program or why I don't use the iPhone for my notes, but...
They do have some with really big screens.
Yeah. Yeah, I need an iPad.
I guess I'll just start by saying that this, I appreciate the program. When we were talking about it, there was concern about cost. However, there's, there's online items particularly for the superintendent to be able to get training and professional development and growth for their, which benefits the entire district. So I, I can't particularly speak on behalf of the reasons why others may have voted, or been willing. We just said this needs to, this is a good use of time for everyone to be able to help her as interim and be able to also then help the district because this is new for you. So it can only help us to have someone who can, can get that level of support.
Thank, thank you for doing that.
So anything else anyone would like to say?
No, it's really interesting to hear the, the support levels that you'll be able to provide. Just so, you know, seeing your face here, that would be great to have on occasion. And just your availability for, for Mary Jane as she's navigating through, you know, these many, many levels of relationship building as well. Because something that you mentioned, which I thought was really, really, really great, but that you wish you understood more, the more importance of relation, that relationship dynamic in the onset. And I think that is very crucial in our district, obviously everywhere, but as we're, you know, navigating some trust building, the better. So that's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
I'm just really glad that, that Mary Jane has that, that support. I think it's really important, especially, you know, coming into the year that we just came off of. I think it's really great that she's, that she's got that. Thank you.
Thanks.
He's been very helpful. He's been very helpful.
I'm just curious, when you found out which district that you were mentoring?
Yeah.
What was your reaction?
You know, it's an interesting question because, as you know, I, I, I am mentoring or coaching right now. Mary Jane is the sixth. So I have three from last year. I had two, and then Mary Jane joined us a little bit later. And they said, "Hey Brackett, we've got another person for you." And I said, "Fine." Because I, I have people in as far north as Methuen and as far south as Blackstone. So I, I pretty much have the north and south covered, right? So when they said, "It's Maynard," first of all, being in Sudbury for eight years, I, I have some familiarity, so I thought, "That's great." But I live in Marlboro, and so I live about five miles away. And I thought, "This is a good one." And then I had the opportunity to meet her, and I said, "This is going to be good work." So, yeah.
Right. Well, we really appreciate your coming and having the conversation with us and helping us understand more about the program. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we can take a question. Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, 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 if you don't mind just coming up. I like your dress, by the way.
You mentioned that you're going to be visiting, especially on the administrative meetings. Is that just administrative meetings, or does that include the CPAC collaboration meetings with the administration as well?
Well, I will follow my, the lead of Mary Jane. So wherever she has a leadership role, so that's where I'll be. So at this point in time, it generally be with the principals. It could be attending staff meeting in the building if she attends. But it would not, I've not in the past attended CPAC meetings or ECL meetings. Generally, the superintendent hasn't had an actual leadership role.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we now, speaking of, are going to move into our, we have a new schedule for the year, and we're very lucky to have the CPAC coming for biannual report out. So we're starting now, and then when will they report out again?
I think it's April or May. I have to look at it. It's posted on the, yeah, it's posted on the...
I think it's, I think it's May.
Yeah, so it, it in the spring.
Yeah.
So...
And of course, this is, you know, this is really kind of like the pilot year of the calendar. So I know we...
Do you have any help with that?
Recognize this. You would never know that Jessica's married to an IT person, so I just want to share.
That's why you don't need to do any of that.
Yeah, there were some questions about, I said, "Oh, maybe HDMI." She's like, "I need to go talk to Adam," so.
Kind of grab up the cable.
Okay. But yeah, so just thinking about this year, you know, the pilot year, we have the annual calendar of events. And so we'll be tweaking that as needed, but I, I think it, you know, having CPAC added there.
That's what you said, yeah. What's under there? Is it one of them?
I thought there was an HDMI. Oh, that's the older.
Yeah, no. He's going to grab one.
Here. I was going to check, root mine.
Sometimes I have one, but I don't.
All right, well, do you, would you want to just introduce yourselves while we're waiting?
We start with introductions. We're here from the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you tonight. I'm Jessica O'Toole. I'm one of the co-chairs right now.
Jessica, can you speak a little? Yeah, I don't know if the recording will pick up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Jessica O'Toole. I'm one of the CPAC co-chairs. Jen O'Leary is the other co-chair. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. We have few of our members, but half of our board is here tonight. Karen Heath is our public outreach coordinator, and Danielle Pimenta is our Fowler School parent rep. John Skodstrom is our treasurer, and Heather Nichol is our Green Meadow parent rep. Our secretary, Jess Sheldon, couldn't make it tonight. And Jess Clark is our high school rep, and she couldn't make it tonight either. I think that's everybody. And Natasha, of course, how could we forget Natasha? Natasha is our events coordinator. And then we also wanted to say thank you to our school committee liaisons. We worked with Bethland last year initially to set up the positions, so thank you. And then we worked with Morrow quite extensively too, the, both of them last year. And then this year, we're happy to have Morrow and Natasha be our liaisons. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Karen, you want to introduce yourself too, and Danielle?
I'm just...
Oh, did they?
Yeah, she introduced everybody.
Oh, she introduced everybody? Can you tell that my brain is not fully here? I apologize.
I'll just say it again. Hi, everybody, I'm, I'm Karen Heath. I've been happy to handle publicity and outreach for CPAC for the past couple of years, which means many of you get emails from me about events, et cetera. And we're pretty excited about the lineup that we have for this year as well, so you'll be hearing more from us about what those events are.
I'm Danielle Pimenta. My son is in seventh grade, and Sophia is four now, so coming to Green Meadow next year. Exciting. Even though my son is not in district right now, I'm still the Fowler parent rep because I'm still very much involved in the community. And what else?
She's one of our resident dyslexia experts.
And actually, to that, to that point, I know Danielle also, which we mentioned earlier in the year, but was recently honored by, at the state level as well, as an unsung hero, heroine, her part in advocacy and the dyslexia law in the community. So that's also great, so thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Natasha.
All right, well, thank you for working with us. Thank you for...
The tech support, everyone.
Yeah. Well done.
Okay, so should you like to contact us, then we're happy to hear from you. These are our addresses.
Does, I wonder if one, one of you might be able to like click or, so you can talk? Yeah.
Where do they take turns? Yeah. Okay. So the first thing we wanted to talk about is why do we have a CPAC? Well, because we have to by law. So Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71B, Section 3, it states, "The school committee of any city, town, or school district shall establish a parent advisory council on special education. Membership is offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. The parent advisory council duties shall include, but not be limited to, advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs."
So in addition to that being regulation by Massachusetts, DASI, the Department of Education, has also provided guidance on how PACs should, should work. Collaboration is a key element of the work we do. We work with different parties from the school committee, including interacting with the special education administrator, the superintendent, and school committee. Thank you, that's why we're here. Interacting with school councils, PTOs, and the community at large. In addition, DASI also guides us to tap into the strength of a parent-school collaboration. We know what research says. The more the parents are involved in their kids' schools and education, the better students do. So making the PAC visible, encouraging parent turnout, outreach programs, or workshops, participating in planning, development, and evaluation of special education programs by addressing the substantive priorities of parents. In other words, we are here to listen to the parents and help transfer that, the needs that the parents have been telling us into implementing planning, development, and evaluation of our special education programs. So the needs assessment is a key thing that we really focus on, which is the survey. And we've been in so many conversations about the survey and the importance of that in guiding planning, development, and evaluation of special education. In addition, creating spin-off groups such as parent support groups. We also meet face-to-face, and parents come in, and, you know, basically we support each other. Helping parents make contributions, the contributions they can. It's a parent-led and parent-informed group, and we all have our own expertise and gifts that we give to the community. We also focus on communicating with non-English-speaking parents because this is not only about special education, but also about ESL students and their families. And lastly, assisting the district in conducting the required annual training, which is required by law, and we've been taking turns with nearby communities hosting it. It's a basic rights training. It's open to anyone, by the way. I would encourage everyone to attend at least one to learn a little bit more about special education and special education law.
The mission that you will see on the snazzy CPAC brochure on our website is what's up on the screen right there. Our mission is to work for the understanding of, respect for, and support of all children with special needs in the community. We break that down in a number of ways, focusing on a number of things that we feel very strongly about. One of the most important is that network that we provide for parents of children with special needs. Special needs parents, I think, can sometimes feel quite isolated. The needs are different. The involvement with the larger school community can feel different. And so knowing that there are other parents you can connect with, that we can learn from, that we can share expertise with, that's really important. An advisory role with the director of student services, the superintendent, the school committee, all of you, on programs and parent and teacher training needs, development policy. We all know that better decisions get made when everyone's perspectives are included, and so we want to lend our expertise to those conversations. Some of that mission gets enacted more broadly. Our involvement and communication with PAC members in other communities and at the local and state, national level. Programs, larger programs within the community that emphasize understanding, acceptance, and inclusion. The individual consultations, meetings with parents, talking with parents about what they might need and what they may need support with. And the informational forums, the community events that we hold, the monthly CPAC workshops that we have. Obviously, we want individual parents to get what they can from us, but we also want the community as a whole to learn what's important because in so many ways, what we're talking about for kids with special needs actually benefit the whole general education population as well.
So you've probably noticed the theme of collaboration. I think that's kind of what CPAC does, is it collaborates with parents and administrators in the school committee. We wanted to talk a little bit about like what true collaboration looks like to us. We would start with a shared goal, and I think we all share the goal. CPAC, the school committee, and the administrators all want to help students succeed and flourish. We come from the understanding that an effective working relationship is rooted in transparency, respect, timely communication, and an openness to listen to various perspectives, which is basically trust. And then CPAC's expertise must be thoughtfully solicited with an expectation of meaningful dialogue. So, you know, as, as we're having these discussions, the CPAC is really representing the parent experience and the parent perspective. And all of us have had to become kind of subject matter experts on our children and our children's disabilities, and we are experts on what the experience for our families is like. So when we are having these discussions, we really want to make sure that we're having a healthy dialogue that's going to lead to improvements in our school. And then just to note that parent feedback needs to be incorporated into district policy, practice, and programs as appropriate because otherwise, parents start feeling alienated and disenfranchised. Nobody wants to feel like their concerns are falling on deaf ears. So, and we just added one of my favorite quotes about collaboration from Helen Keller. Alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much.
We want to name a few things that we're proud of. Accomplishments of what CPAC has worked hard on so far. The monthly CPAC meetings that we've talked about that bring in guests with expertise, talk about particular topics that are relevant for families with kids with special needs. Lots of networking and support, as we've talked about, including our two events that include the kids, the two yearly socials that we have in December and June. You all will be getting invitations from us. We hope you can come. We have increasingly, over the past few years, established an even stronger social media presence. We know that there are many parents who can't make it here, who can't make it to CPAC meetings, but who benefit a lot from events from other community CPACs that we're posting, from information in the news, from latest research, from articles about best practices. And we try to keep that CPAC page full and lively as much as we can. We're also really excited that the board at this point, I think, is the... We're also really excited that the board at this point, I think, is the fullest and sort of most active I've seen in the years that I've been involved. It's bigger, and people, I think, are very committed to the work that we're doing. There are a couple of open meetings, bimonthly, our regular board business meeting, and then the collaboration meeting that we have with the Director of Student Services. Anyone here who has curiosities, concerns, who just wants to come and listen, we would really love to have you there. And as Jess has already pointed out, the established school committee liaison positions, we are so excited to have that in place, and we really thank you for that support.
Something that was really special that happened towards the end of last year and coming into this year is we established subcommittees, because we realized in our meetings that there were just too many items to tackle in a whole board meeting. So now we have six different subcommittees: Safety Survey, Reading Assessment Instruction Focus Group, Professional Development and Training, Communication Accessibility, Policy Procedures and Protocols. This is still new. Some subcommittees have met a couple of times, others haven't yet, and we're really looking forward to see what kind of work we can come up with by the end of the year that really will improve the Maynard school system and help students who are, and families feel like they're hurt, right? In addition, another accomplishment that we had last year was the dyslexic screening study, which we facilitated. It was a free study by the GAB Lab of Boston Children's and Harvard Medical School. They came here to green medal and screened the children whose parents gave the authorization to do so. And we really hope that that experience allowed the administration, the teachers, to see what the screening is like, and the logistics, and how to use it, implement it, and monitor students, because now the dyslexia screening is law, right? So we have to do it this year. It's in place. So we're really hoping that the experience last year will translate to a easier rollout of the dyslexia screening.
And CPAC has to give a special shout-out to Danielle for her role in making that possible. Wouldn't have done that without her.
Thank you, Danielle.
Goals, sort of meaningful work that we have ahead of us for this year, things that we're very excited to work on now that the school committee liaison positions are here. We want to start using those relationships to make sure that the dialogue is ongoing and that we have the benefit to learn from each other and to offer CPAC expertise to whatever issues might be relevant. The subcommittees that Danielle was referring to are what you see showing up in a lot of that sort of collaborative work on that list there. Implementing the dyslexia screening law, that's a new and wonderful opportunity that we're really excited to move forward with. One we feel particularly urgent about, procedures for individual Alice safety plans, so that kids with disabilities are accommodated in appropriate ways. The consistent process for family surveys and analyzing feedback, we can only do good work when we have good information to base it on, and so we need to hear from our families, and we need to be sure that that survey is happening in a way that solicits that feedback as well as possible. Consistent communication channels, as we have been talking about all evening, strengthening that school-to-home partnership. Those of you who have received the procedural safeguards mailing that has to do with information about special education in the district and information that parents need to know, it's a lot of essential information in a format that is very dense, and so one of our goals is to make that a more parent-friendly resource, so people might actually make better use of it. And we also want to lend our perspective to any of the sort of school-sponsored events that might have considerations that are particular for kids with special needs, and how we make sure that those are, to echo the student presentation a little bit ago, as inclusive as they need to be. The last one, expanding program content on the district website. Mauro and I actually started that conversation with Carol Gayhan a couple nights ago. We have great information that's already there in terms of whom to contact, what the missions are, what the offices actually do, but we really think that that could be a site for a lot of education for families. We're thinking about those as sort of a first point of contact, especially for new families going through the specialized process, and right now, there's not a lot that educates them there, so we're really excited about building that content, too.
So, one of the data trends we wanted to highlight, because it is a concern, is the trends for the out-of-district costs. So, an out-of-district placement is when a child with an IEP cannot get their needs met here at Maynard, they will get placed out to like a therapeutic school or something with a specific specialized school. So as you can see, like, in the last three years or four years, our costs have almost doubled. So we wanted to just highlight that, and then, you know, as we're having these conversations, that's something that we would like to talk about, like, how can we try to reverse this trend?
I just wanted to let everyone know that this is from ClearGov, so I know we promote, like, we want to put a plug out there, so this data is available. And I think there's also, what I saw was a separate data point that talked about the different tuition, like where, so it's a collaborative, public school, private school, so it did get a little bit more granular, but just wanted to share that. Thank you.
So we had a few recommendations that we wanted to present, and sort of as we're thinking about these recommendations, kind of one of the things that we keep in mind, and the research bears this out, is that early intervention pays off. And if you're investing in trying, in the necessary interventions supports earlier on, you can save yourself money later when it comes to more intensive services or outplacements. You know, there's the reality of the current budget, but sometimes if you are not really getting in there with the early intervention, you end up paying more later and losing kids. So the first recommendation we have is improve communication pathways for collaborative educational partnership between districts and families. So again, it's highlighting the collaboration, and one of the ideas we had was to hold listening sessions with special education families. We have a lot of families that are out of district right now, and I think it makes sense to talk to them and find out, you know, what's working at their current placement, what wasn't working here. Maybe there are some things that we can do to help bring them back or to keep kids here in the first place. There are also special education families that have placed their children in charter schools or private schools because they didn't feel that their child was successful here. So I think it makes sense to talk to them, too, and say, "What can we offer here? What are you finding in these other placements that's working for your child?" And then just finally, just talking to special education families in general. Find out what's great here, what's working for them, what could we do to make their children more successful here? The second recommendation we had was improve internal procedures to support inclusion district-wide. Ensure special education leaders are part of all decision-making, and identify efficiencies for an enhanced family experience. So some of this is stuff that we're doing in the collaborative subcommittees, things like the event planning, like, if we have a procedure where we're considering the kids that need accommodations or extra support early on in the process, it's going to be a lot easier to have, easier to have a successful, inclusive event. The other idea that we had is to make the IEPs and 504s accessible electronically through Tyler, both for families and for staff, so that you can refer to them very easily.
And I cannot say enough about the ability to look at IEPs and 504s or information online as a teacher. If I had to go to the special education office to find paperwork, to be able to plan my lessons, given that I have over 100, well, really, 130 now, students, that is just a burden, right? But if I have it easily accessible, I can create these lesson plans that accommodate, that look at the needs of every single student without it being a burden to me. So, just putting out there. Other recommendations: Make social-emotional learning and support throughout the district a priority. Number one, implement professional development on trauma-informed practices. I just had that as soon as I came back this year, where we had an excellent professional development on trauma-informed practices, how to make decisions in the classroom that are sensitive to kids who may have experienced trauma, and what symptoms of trauma looks like, so we can identify early on before we make mistakes in the classroom. It was actually very, very helpful. Number two, explicit instruction in social thinking and executive functioning skills. And social thinking goes hand-in-hand with executive functioning skills, and I have to say, this is not only for special education students. All students benefit from explicit teaching of social skills and executive functioning skills. And I'll tell you, you improve school attendance if students know how to plan ahead, organize their clothing the night before, and get their binders and their backpacks, right? All that stuff, if you teach them explicitly, they'll learn, and their experience in school will be easier. Aspire is our suggestion for the center that really looks at executive functioning. They focus on autism, because there is this correlation between executive functioning and autism, but it's not only for autistic kids. In the spring, I took a workshop on executive functioning by them, and I was blown away. It was fantastic. So there at Massachusetts General Hospital. Number four, allocate resources to better anticipate growing districts' special education needs. So develop concretely strategic plans to monitor rollout of the dyslexia screening law. I cannot say enough about the importance of having a strategic plan to roll this out, because we've never done it before, right? So we need to plan, we have to be strategic. Not only do we have to identify the assessments that are necessary to identify the different parts of reading, such as phonemic awareness and rapid naming, we also have to make sure we have the assessments. We have to make sure that whoever is assessing has been trained on how to assess it. Then we need the logistics, which space are we going to use to assess these kids, and at what time, and how often are we doing this? And then, once we have the results, how do we communicate that with parents? How do we intervene? Where is the professional development for the teachers intervening? How do we monitor after? There are so many parts to this, and it's a law, and it's in place, and we have to do it. So I cannot say enough about our recommendation to have a strategic plan in place to make sure that not only are we following the law, but more importantly, that we are identifying the kids early on in kindergarten and giving them what they need then, so they don't need special education pullout later. In addition to that, implement student mentoring opportunities to foster inclusive mindset, expanding the Best Buddies Program, or even using the I-to-I mentoring, which pairs high school students with specific learning disabilities with middle school students who have similar disabilities, and how they can connect, support each other, and move away from feeling ashamed of having a disability into bringing that disability as part of their identity and recognizing it for their uniqueness in the world. So these are some of our recommendations. I think we have a few more.
Two last ones. We are really excited about the pending legislation we would love to see support for. That pending legislation for the non-voting seat for a CPAC member, a representative at school committee meetings. We're happy to have Senator Eldred's support for that. As we've been saying all along in so many of the items, the opportunity to have all perspectives at the table when an issue that the district is considering for education as a whole, there might be some element of it that needs a different nuance for students with special needs, and so having some of that expertise at the table for those conversations would be great. And then there are so many things that the district is already doing well, and so building on them, leveraging them to sort of expand those possibilities would be great. The Oasis program that the high school has, expanding that to Fowler would be great. Again, I think it's at the high school that there is currently a Best Buddies Program, giving students at Fowler the opportunity for that kind of work would also be wonderful. Aspire, that Danielle had already mentioned, through MGH, currently has some involvement with the district, mostly for sort of individual families and consultation in that way. But they're also available to consult in a broader way on programming and resources for the district as a whole, and so taking advantage of that would be a wonderful thing to be able to do as well.
So that's what we have. If you have any questions or comments or feedback, give you an opportunity for that now.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you. Very informative.
Thanks.
It was a collaborative effort.
I'll send you a couple of things I need to...
So I guess I would just say, first off, just recognizing that you're on volunteer positions, and that you're also all in the position of also advocating for individual children, and that that is, takes a lot of time and energy as well. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing for the community and your service. And I love seeing, one, the passion, two, just the, just clear expertise that you bring to the plate and perspective around considering goals and recommendations, and how we work together to help make the district work for all students. And I appreciate that you're considering the full picture, too, of all students, you're not just considering children with special, and seeing where you can help that, how that works for everyone. And at the same time, there are times when you really need to particularly focus and consider those special needs, and that's a very important piece to make sure is in the picture. So we really appreciate your coming to present, and I, for one, really look forward to seeing how things progress through the year, and hearing that presentation this spring, and where those committees are going, and what can be done. And also considering leveraging, like, I think I mentioned the email leveraging, like, you have your policy committee, but making sure that that's, that there's...
Alignment.
Alignment with our, the policies subcommittee that we have through school committee, so that we can try to make sure that we, it's great, because you'll do that work or whatever you feel like you need to do, but it might be good to make sure that there's some point at which we look at that alignment, so that when we're moving forward, that that makes sense, there's not redundancy, but that we're also serving purposes together, and I think that's all about, right?
Absolutely. And I should clarify, too, that the subcommittees have administrators in them, too, so it's not only parents, so it's a collaborative effort between parents and school.
A school committee member, or two CPAC members and an administrator.
And I appreciate you letting me, like, jump in when I can for being a part of that, so thank you.
Absolutely. And just putting in the plug for the social thinking workshop coming up with Nancy Clemens. She's the Executive Director of Social Thinking Boston. It's on Tuesday, November 5th, 7:00 PM here at the Fowler Library. We'd love to have you all, and, you know, if you can share with your neighbors, you'll be really wonderful.
I know you'll be surprised to hear that you'll be getting many emails from me.
Excellent. And we can make sure we put that out? Yeah. Okay. Excellent. And then, I do want to make sure that folks have, get to ask any questions or comments you wanted to make.
I'm looking forward to talking about, I don't know if we'll be able to get through all of those recommendations, but at our next collaboration meeting. You know, I know we've talked about some of them, but I felt like there was, there were some in there that we haven't really talked about, so that'd be great.
This is more of a general thing, is if we could take presentations, both this and the next one, and be able to put those on our website, would we be able to do that? Is that, that's what came to me?
Yeah, sure, of course. And Mauro, actually, this is more, I have a question for you, because I know you were working on something about the procedural, was there like a, last year, there was...
A roadmap.
Yeah, yeah, so...
We're working on that.
Oh, okay, great.
I actually was going to go over that in my comments.
Oh, nice, okay. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Let me take your computer back now. All right.
You're providing the computer.
Yeah. Thank you for the cable. So we're now moving on to, we also appreciate that tonight, we're having a presentation on the School Improvement Plans, Strategic Plan, MCAS Report. So, and that is going to be led by our Assistant Superintendent, Jennifer Gaddett, and also we have Chuck and Mike here to assist with that, as principals of the high school and Fowler for instruction curriculum. It's Curriculum Assessment Instructions, Curriculum Instruction Assessment. CIA. That's how I remember it, CIA. Is it not working for you? All right.
So thank you. I do, I'd be very positive of the task that Mr. Roth does have to leave in about 10 minutes. Want to give him an opportunity to share some of his thinking. What was important to us as we were building this presentation and looking at the data is that, as we've emphasized in the past, we need to be using... is that, as we've emphasized in the past, we need to be using data to inform our decision-making around programming and improvement efforts. This is one data point that we use annually in order to make some of those decisions, and we're excited to share some of that with you. I do also want to mention that Donna Dankner was intending to come tonight, but she is ill, and I sense her apologies. So just as a brief piece, and again, just being cognizant of time, wanted to make sure that we had an understanding of the way in which the assessment has changed. We've mentioned at multiple presentations that the change in the assessment creates a change in both reporting dynamics of what data we get, how we can correlate that data across time, and additionally, with the change in the online testing, the ways in which our students are being asked to respond. So this is the presentation. I think this is a good example, and I thank Mr. Barth for this comparison. Example of sort of legacy items, these are the ones that were assessed based on the old standards, based on the paper and pencil version, where you can see it's very simple, sort of do the math, plug it in, and to find the vocabulary term. And these are examples of the same grades for the next generation types of questions. So not only do you have a more complicated sort of question over on the math side, but you also have a more complicated way of answering it, wherein you have to drag and drop the numbers into those spaces. So when we talk about teaching to the test, in some capacities, we are teaching how to take the test, and that is a really important function of the work that we're doing with students as well. And then, over on the right-hand side with the ELA components, you can see that there is a sort of summary piece of this, and then they're asked to move on to provide supporting information. So it's not just simply vocabulary and recall, it is very much analyzing the documents and the information that they're given. As students go up through the years in ELA, they are given multiple documents that they have to synthesize. And I, as have those of us with a long history in education, have sometimes taken exception with the kinds of questions that the MCAS has judged school districts on, because although that was never the intention, that has become the impact of that. I have to say that is particularly for the ELA and for the math pieces, it does appear that these are things that we care about. So we do, it does give a bit more weight to the assessment.
Can I say one thing about this slide? Please do. Is that these Part A, Part B questions, which are very, very common now in the ELA MCAS, you have to, if you get Part A right, you get one point. If you get Part B right, you get another point. But because Part B is based on Part A, if you get Part A wrong, but you get Part B correct, they attribute that to luck, and you get zero points for the question. So you have to get both parts right to get two points. You can't just get one point by getting Part A and getting Part B wrong. So it's pretty tricky for the kids to go through the test and just...
So basically, if you guess, it's not always the best strategy anymore.
No.
Yeah, that used to be...
Right, that was a strategy, like you wouldn't do it unless you guessed, so...
So in looking at sort of accountability designations and data, I'm like, what time is it? Okay, I want to get to the part where you talk about your work that you're doing, because it's so exciting. So the accountability designation, you can go on to the state's website and see the entire accountability report card. Our report card is technically not up, but you can see all of the accountability information. You can dive down into each indicator. As we mentioned last year, the accountability designation looks at two different groups of students. One is for all students, and one is for the lowest performing quartile. And there are weighted elements to that to determine how we are doing, both with all students, but as we mentioned last year, there is a larger weight for the lowest performing quartile. We're really focusing on our more struggling students, and we've had some really good successes in that area over the last year. This year, and I'm sad that Mary Branley is not here, because she loves to ask, what number are we, what number designation do we have? And I say that they have gotten rid of those, and they truly have. There is no correlation between meeting or not meeting in levels one, two, three, or four. But we, as a district and as schools, have all been designated as not requiring assistance or intervention, with two of the schools and the district making substantial progress towards goals, and the high school making progress towards goals. And those are things that are very much worth celebrating. Additionally, if you look at the comparisons between the accountability percentiles and the progress towards improvement performance, you can see significant increases in those areas. And again, it was mentioned at the last meeting, you know, are we celebrating, you know, that, I think someone said, some percentage of our students not being proficient in math? No, we're not celebrating that, but what we are celebrating is that we're putting improvement processes in place, and we're getting better. So these are the high school and the district components, and again, you can see some increases, although I think I might have flipped those two numbers there, on the high school one, and the accountability percentiles with some significant increases as well. I'm not gonna go through all of these. Again, this is information that you can see on the DUCY website, but essentially, what this does is it goes through and shows how many points were earned off of these different accountability measures. One is, as we've mentioned in the past, achievement, and another one is growth, and those are both important. This is Green Meadow, so they don't have growth, because you need two years of data in order to show that piece of it, and obviously, they don't have the high school components. The other thing that you'll notice is progress towards attaining English language proficiency. That does not mean that our students did not make progress in Green Meadow, it simply means that we don't have a large enough cohort for them to report out on for that, which is one of the challenges we often have with the data, is that some of our cohorts that we want to dive deeper in and disaggregate, they don't give us the numbers on, because it's too small of a group, and they don't want to identify individuals. So we can see here some really great gains for Fowler, some really important things that we did very well on, particularly for all students. And Mike, do you want to talk about?
Can you talk a little bit about this? So basically, what you're shooting for is to get a 75, to get, that's medium targets, is to get 75% of your points. And with our achievement total, we did that, we got nine out of 12 points, which is 75%, which means we made some progress in ELA, but we made over, we got bonus points in science for exceeding our targets, and then we got our math targets we met. And so that averaged out to, you know, being a three out of four each indicator, and thus we got 75% of our achievement points. In terms of our growth, we were very close, six out of eight within our 75 meeting targets. We, again, in ELA, for very specific reasons that we'll talk about in a few minutes, were just making some progress, but not meeting our targets for ELA, and for math, we were meeting our targets, so we got five out of eight points there. And if you want to go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about this problem down here, which...
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? It wasn't...
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Mike Barth, CIA Principal at Fowler. Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. So we discovered, when I, we did so much work last year, I'll try to give you the short story of it, in working with our families to attend school and to not have reached that threshold of 18 days, which the state has defined as chronically absent. When we, and when we got to the end of the year, we determined we had, would have just met our goal. The state said we could have no higher than 6% of our students missing 18 days, and we had like five-point-something percent. So we were excited, we have a team of people here who work on that every week, and we talk about students, and we do lots of positive things, promote good school attendance. We also work with the Framingham Juvenile Court with families that aren't sending kids to school. And when we got our data, it showed that we had zero points for chronic absenteeism. And you want to have, four would be exceeding targets, we should have had three, which is meeting our targets. And when we dug into that and communicated with the state around that, we found out that there was an error in our SIMS data submission, unfortunately, it was too late to correct for the state's part. Unfortunately, the state would rather have incorrect data locked in place forever in its history, rather than just making a simple correction and correcting the data, but they wouldn't do it, and so we were stuck with the zero points this year. However, next year, moving forward, we've identified the issue in our SIMS reporting, and it won't happen again. But we should have had three points here. It doesn't, chronic absenteeism doesn't weigh a lot, it only weighs 10% in the weight of these indicators, so it's only given a 10% weight. It would have maybe increased this, I think I redid the math, and it would have increased it to like a 72 instead of a 70%. So it's not a huge thing, but it was something a team of people here worked so hard on, and teachers worked so hard on, that we were disappointed to see the state wouldn't make that correction for us.
So a couple of pieces just related to the high school. You see the two out of four points related to the advanced coursework completion. We made some very nice gains in that, particularly for some of our at-risk cohorts. So these are some of the things that we want to celebrate. Essentially, as Mr. Barth mentioned, that this is all about meeting or exceeding or making progress towards targets. These are all things that the district or individual schools either met their targets, exceeded their targets, or made substantial progress towards meeting those targets. And so for English Language Arts Achievement, we have all students and our lowest performing cohort in grades three through eight, and also at the high school. I put in parentheses if they have met or exceeded, as those are the two more advanced categories. If there's no parentheses, it indicates that they have made substantial progress towards those. Our science achievement at grades three through eight, we exceeded for all students in high needs. It's a particular area of celebration that we'll talk a bit about later on. We had typical growth for all of our students, lowest performing and high need in grades three through eight. Essentially, what that means, what typical growth means, is that you are above 50% on the student growth percentiles. That is considered typical growth. At the high school, we exceeded typical growth for all students. Math, we had similarly successful growth for all of our student cohorts, and progress towards English language proficiency, we exceeded our target for grades three through eight. Again, at the high school, it's not necessarily because our students did not make that progress, but because the cohort is too small. And as I mentioned, the advanced coursework at the high school, that we met the target for all students and exceeded it for our high-need students, which is, again, an indicator of some of the work we're doing around inclusion and making sure that all students are being provided access to rigorous curriculum. So we're gonna focus, we've done some celebrations, we want to focus a little bit on areas where we need to get better. I'm gonna do the math afterwards, but first, I want Mike to talk a little bit about where we need to go for English Language Arts. When we look at the data disaggregated by curricular area, the place where we are having the most difficulty is under the language standard, under conventions of standard English, and that is across the boards when we look three through eight. That is something that we are struggling with. You will see later on, we talked about having our teachers in vertical meetings, asking exploratory questions, and this is one of the questions they had asked last year. So we are doing a lot of work in this area. And Mr. Barth, if you want to talk about the work for the writing at that Fowler?
Yeah, so the clear issue in our data with MCAS is writing. It's across the board, and also, as Jen mentioned, the convention spelling grammar mechanics is something that the data shows we need to work on. I feel that with that particular piece, IXL is going to be great for that, and that's something that students started doing, they started, we piloted it last year for a bit, but this year, we signed on full on, and students are doing that in grade six through eight in their zone time, students in grade four doing it as part of a station in class, and students in grade five, I believe, are doing it as homework. So we've got kind of a plan for how IXL will be backfilling some of those basic gaps in conventions with ELA, and it's got spelling components, it's got grammar components, so I'm excited about that. And you can log into IXL and sort of see as an administrator the growth that we're experiencing right now as a school, and I just sent an email to our staff today about that. It's working, our students are becoming proficient in all these different skills that are based on what is recommended for each child. So each child works on a diagnostic part of IXL first, then it determines what each child needs, and then each child then works on recommended skills from that diagnostic. So all the kids are working on different things, based on what they need. Some of them are above grade level, IXL is K, pre-K through 12, so a student could be working in fourth grade, could be working on second-grade standards, could be working on seventh-grade standards. It's just what every kid needs. So I'm very excited about that. In terms of writing, we've set a writing goal this year, which is an evolution of the writing work that we did last year, which is that we will use our common assessments, which are writing rubrics, to determine where gaps exist, and then teachers are going to intervene in those gaps to create and implement interventions, and then reassess if those interventions work to see if the gap was closed. Am I talking to the audience or the school committee anyways?
You can talk.
Sorry about that.
They're not getting this.
My back is to you. So we're just very excited about that work. All of our teachers are now spending their early release time, that is a focus of our PD this year, in addition to other district PD focuses, but that writing work is something that I think is going to be very effective to really identify where we need to intervene, and how we can best intervene in the gaps that our students have with writing, and to try and close those gaps, and to close them faster than just one grade level in one year. But if a student is down, has a learning gap of maybe second or third grade, in fourth grade, then they need to close maybe 1.5 years in a year to be able to catch up. So that's a really important work that teachers are working on this year.
In addition, for the language standards for conventions of English, the phonics program at Green Meadow, again, that was implemented last year, they got through about half of each kit, because it was the implementation year, and we went slow to go fast, so that when we implemented. So that is work that we are expecting to have some impact on the conventions of standard English as well at the elementary before MCAS. Oh, for math?
Thank you, Mike.
Oh, sorry. So the math, there really was no trend across any of the grade levels or the standards of where the deficits were. There was a trend in regard to writing and explanation in relation to math, I mean, that is, and that's something that we've spoken about quite a bit. So really, what that means is that we need to do more at each grade level to ensure that those assessments are, that staff have assessments that they're using in order to inform their instruction on critical skills and concepts. The work at Fowler related to the common planning times, they have significant time to be able to do that work. And the high school, Mr. Kerry Janis is gonna talk a little bit in one of the future slides about the work that they're doing at the high school to have math across the curriculum in the same way we have literacy across the curriculum. So some very successful areas for us across the board, our language standard of vocabulary use and acquisition was very strong across multiple grade levels, our reading standard assessments were incredibly strong, and we want to celebrate the writing at grade 10, as this is the work, and I'm sorry that Mr. Barth isn't here to celebrate in this with us as well, but the work that he just addressed, that the Fowler will be doing this year, is the work that the high school did last year. So Mr. Kerry Janis, you want to talk about the success of that initiative?
So at the high school, two years ago, we looked at MCAS data and found that the high school was underperforming the state slightly as a gross MCAS number, but we also noticed that the high school was underperforming the state in all writing areas, every single standard that the state was measuring. So the staff got together and looked at that data, and we, as a group, determined that we would take on writing across the curriculum in all areas. So in order to address that, after the data analysis, we decided that we formed multidisciplinary teacher groups that engaged in inter-rater reliability work, to make sure that people were grading consistently in all subject areas. After doing the inter-rater work, people went back to their individual departments and looked at samples of student writing, could be lab reports in science, it could be word problems in mathematics, and the teams individually determined by grade and by subject area where the writing deficits were. So they then, as a next step beyond that, formulated interventions that would be attempted with each grade level and each subject area, and that... And that work of just getting ready took us the first year of our two-year goal. In the second year, we implemented those interventions, and we looked at student writing samples in each subject area and each grade level multiple times during the year to assess whether or not the interventions were working. By the end of the year, anecdotally, all the lead teachers were reporting greatly improved student writing. When the 2019 MCAST data came out just a couple of weeks ago, what we found was the anecdotal reports were being backed up by the MCAST data. So to give you some idea, we slightly underperformed the state in 2018. We over, we outperformed the state by four points in 2019. In 2018, on the 42 standards measured at that time, we outperformed the state in 45% of the standards, but underperformed the state in 55% of the standards. Last year, we outperformed the state in 82% of the standards and underperformed the state in 18% of the standards. And in 2018, where we had underperformed in every single writing standard, in 2019, we outperformed the state in every single writing standard. So we really looked at that two-year initiative as, as successful and something that we're going to continue with. We also saw some bumps in our math and science scores, that I think could be attributed to that writing initiative as well, because students were becoming more familiar with the language of, that is in use on the MCAST test in, in reading things more closely. So we were very pleased with that. And I guess we'll talk a little while about how we're putting a similar protocol in place to work with some math MCAST data we've been looking at. Should I dive into that now?
So I think this does show, and this is what Mr. Kary Janis was just speaking about, is that the short answer in open responses in math and science, we had significant increases. And again, I'm incredibly sorry, Mary is not here. We talk about this annually, she mentions annually, that we need to work on our writing. We did work on our writing at the high school, and it is a tribute to Mr. Kary Janis and his team, who worked to make sure that this was happening. So based off, and again, this is the work that is being done at Fowler this year. They did the first year work last year, they'll be doing the second year work. Based off of this success, Mr. Kary Janis is leading an initiative in math similarly.
So using this model, we are now looking at our math data. What we found is, we looked again at 2018 and 2019 MCAST data, and what we found was that our students were significantly underperforming in certain categories of math, math topics. It's almost as if our students had holes. To give you some idea, in, in decimals and fractions at the high school level, we were dramatically underperforming the state by 13 and 14%. Students doing some basic volume calculations were underperforming the state pretty dramatically. So as we looked at that data, and we're just starting on this this year, we're, we're in October. Our staff has already identified as a group areas that we think need strengthening. This includes, let me just find that precisely, calculating volume, number sense and regrouping, unit conversions, problem solving, proper use of reference sheets, which was very surprising, using a calculator as an estimating and evaluative tool, not just as a mechanical tool. We noticed that evaluating functions was a problem, and fractions and decimals are a problem. We had interdisciplinary groups of teachers look at the MCAST data, and they identified these nine specific areas. They also began the process of identifying how each department could contribute to working with students to close these gaps. For example, the English department could work on math vocabulary. Science department could help students looking at relevant versus irrelevant data, and look in, using conversion sheets on scientific programs. So as we went through it, every department, the history department could look at graphing and how graphs are created, and how data is used to form things. You know, in economics, for example, there are many topics related to mathematics. So we're pretty early on in the process this year, but we've already identified the specific areas that we want to work on. We've already begun formulating how each department can contribute to the whole. And at our next meeting, we're going to talk about additional training that staff members might feel like they need, just as we did inter-rater reliability. And we'll be breaking into individual department teams to come up with specific interventions by grade level, as we did with English. I think unlike English, where we've done this once before, we're hoping to reach implementation during this year, rather than next year. We've added IXL to the high school in grades nine and 10, in English and math. So as we identify students with needs, we can start them in terms of individual remediation, and we can use that IXL data as sort of a formative assessment at the end of this year, as we head into next year. So we're hoping to see similar gains in math within the next year to two years that we've seen in English, while we continue the English initiative and continue to refine it.
It's a really exciting work. We'll go through some of these articles. So these illustrate, you know, the, the strengths that we've had over math over the last several years. We've been focusing on number sense as a foundational skill, and we're seeing that work pay off with some of these basic sort of number and operation-based ten and fractions and the real number system. What we now need to do is to move into, as Mr. Kary Janis was, was pointing out, some of the more complicated or more interdisciplinary elements. Some real areas of success were in science, where we had gains everywhere. In science, in grade five, we went from below the state average by double digits in almost every standard to above or at the state average. Additionally, incredibly impressive, given that this was the first year of its assessment, we were above the state average in scientific practices, particularly at the eighth grade level, which I think we can directly likely attribute to the fact that all of our eighth graders had engineering last year, where they were going through engineering design processes. So programmatic piece that is really showing an impact on something that we care about. At the grade eight level, similarly, not only did we make the negative numbers positive, we also doubled our areas where we were above the state average. I give complete credit to our grade five and grade eight, grade five team of teachers and grade eight teacher, well, team of teachers in regards to the engineering program as well. But the grade five teachers did work the previous summer to align the curriculum to the new standards, developed interdisciplinary units, and implemented those last year. So what you're seeing is the work where our teachers are, are developing the curriculum, teaching the curriculum, assessing students, and being able to intervene, so we're getting these types of results. At the high school level, we did have some celebrations in grade 10 science. I think what was impressive is that we had an increase of, in all of the standard areas from where we were the year before, with the exception of one. Obviously, these are not the numbers that we want to continue to see, but I think again, it shows some of the ways in which we are helping students to be able to see scientific principles. The interdisciplinary work that's being done at the high school in math, I fully believe is going to impact these science results as well, because again, science is the application of the mathematical concepts. And so the more our students are able to manipulate numbers in the way they manipulate letters, the more likely they are going to be able to apply that knowledge to some of these pieces. So again, we'll see some interdisciplinary connections in that capacity as well. So connecting again our data to our improvement goals, these improvement goals are designed to be multi-year goals, where we work collaboratively with teacher teams to identify what areas we need to focus on, but we do that through looking at the data, looking at the information that we have. And so the district improvement goals, you see there, these are the ones that we have here. For the academic goal, our goal is to develop common assessments for all of the core content areas. And then for the social emotional goal, to demonstrate a growth in staff and community positive culture, as evidenced by community surveys. Mr. Kary Janis mentioned the work that was being done at the high school, and Mr. Barth mentioned the work that was being done at Fowler in regards to their academic goals at Green Meadow. Again, looking at all of the areas in which students were challenged based on the MCAST and looking at other pieces. It really needs to be work around the writing component and the open response, in addition to some of the phonics and the foundational mechanical skills in, of English as well. The teams at Green Meadow are using data to analyze where their students currently are, identify which students have met expectation for particular standards, and then creating interventions similar to the process that the high school underwent last year, and that Fowler will be doing this year as well. We will continue for all three of the schools to have the same social emotional goal, that students will be able to use a variety of social emotional strategies when encountering difficult situations. We are tackling that differently in the different buildings, as we have done in the past. Both Green Meadow and Fowler are continuing the PBIS program implementation. At Fowler, they are expanding that this year to focus on self-management and responsible decision-making, where the students are actually going to be working with teachers on developing strategies in those areas. At the high school, the teachers are again going to be working on the social emotional goal through the CASL model, which identifies the six different areas of social emotional competencies. The teachers last year identified that the two they felt were most important were decision-making and self-management. And so they will be designing specific strategies that they can implement with the students in their classes, to help students improve these, and will be giving assessments to determine whether students are growing in those areas. And those assessments are self-assessments. Students will self-identify whether they feel that they've increased their capacity. And this is all based off of Transform Ed, which is a nonprofit company focused on improving social emotional learning within schools, and have found some very, very significant results in the use of self-assessments to demonstrate growth with students in Boston Public Schools and at schools across the country, particularly in California. So another piece that we talked about last year was using the Data Into Action model. This was the first year, last year was the first year that we were able to do this with our staff through the vertical meetings. Many of the teams got through data meeting one, where they were viewing existing data and asking questions to determine their exploratory question. A couple of the teams moved on to data meeting two, where they began to triangulate the data, looking at our common assessments and things of that nature. A couple of the teams identified through their use of data meeting one, that their work before they begin to triangulate data needs to be to design a line curricula that is particularly in areas of social studies, world language, social studies, world language. I don't remember, now I'm blanking. Social studies, world language, there's like three or four of them. And so their work this year in their common planning, or in their vertical meetings, will be to continue to develop that curriculum. So these are the exploratory questions for three of the core content areas. Again, social studies, they found through their work that what we need to do, particularly with the new frameworks that were adopted last year, is to redesign our curriculum to meet those frameworks. And so that is, we have done, this summer, teachers worked on redesigning the eighth grade civics class, which is currently being implemented, the seventh grade world history class, which had modified expectations. The fifth grade standards are all aligned, and we are showing and working with teachers on scope and sequences for K through four this year. So, but these are the exploratory questions that you can see the teachers will be working on this year in their vertical meetings. We have four different vertical meetings planned. Some of them will be building specific, but it will be vertical within the building. The reason we did that was because it allowed us to use all of the early release time, whereas if we cross buildings, we lose about an hour of that time, due to the different dismissal times. So we will have four different meetings where they are working on determining if these exploratory questions are, are true, whether we can get some answers to that. And then because it didn't fit on the last slide, this is the science one. And again, you're seeing a continued focus on use of reasoning, use of evidence, to see if they can improve their scores in those areas, and the student skills in those areas. Are there any questions?
I think we had a different slide deck.
Yeah.
I think the one that we had on, got on Tuesday, because there's a lot of stuff, just even the one that you talked about, but it is great content, I can tell it was a lot contributed, but I just, we're missing some of the information.
So I want to open up and see if people have questions or comments?
I, I actually, thank you very much. Thank you very much for presenting. I had some high school questions, I don't know if it'd be best for you, because I, some of the data is, for me, is not, you know, very intuitive to interpret, so I didn't know if it would be possible, the, the data part that talked about the points for the high school, if that's something that you could maybe expand on a little bit? Had like the achievement growth that, for the high school, here, a little bit compared to?
So our achievement targets, that's a...
Chuck, I'm sorry, but do you mind using the microphone? Yeah, thank you.
So our, our achievement targets are relatively low. Last year, we saw, we, let me back up a little bit. About five years ago, the state sent us a letter commending us on our MCAST scores. And we have seen a decline over the last two or three years in particular. So when we began looking at MCAST data, and for example, formulating our writing goal, we put some changes in place in the high school. Due to some budgetary challenges, we had fewer elective classes we had been offering, and students had been taking more directed studies. We reallocated resources over the last two years, so that our students are taking far fewer directed studies and are able to take more elective classes. So what you see in the data here is, although our achievement targets are low, you'll notice our growth total is seven out of eight possible points. Our special education students are exceeding growth targets over the last two years. For example, our students as a whole met or exceeded growth targets in all subject areas. So if we continue with student individual growth at that rate, it's going to start turning up in the achievement numbers, hopefully within the next year or two. We also increased the number of students who are taking advanced placement, or what the state now defines as advanced coursework. Our students who are in the low socioeconomic category are actually taking advanced placement courses in much, in, in much greater numbers. Our annual dropout rate has improved. We've been working on absenteeism, we have a task force in place for that. So what we've done is, we've looked at the data, we've put together an attendance team. We're in the process right now of, we have, we have put in place a credit recovery period in the high school day. We were able to find a teacher to do that. I'm in the process of developing a proposal for summer programming, for eighth, rising eighth grade students to have enrichment activities in the summer, as well as high school students to be able to take summer school classes on campus, because students who do fail classes do not tend to go to summer school and make up work in very large numbers, because they have to commute to those programs. So Michelle Rosendez will be receiving a proposal in the next, early next week. It's about $10,000.
Spoiler alert.
Is this part of the council recommendations for budget?
Yeah. So, but, and we're, we're also looking at very targeted and very rapid responses to students who begin to struggle, and we, we have a team put together working on, on a protocol for that right now. So we've seen, I guess the, the, the real highlight is how dramatic our growth targets have improved in the last year, and with the math, we hope to see that continue. And I think we're going to start seeing a turn up in our achievement totals in, in very short order as well.
Chuck, do, do we have the same problem with the Sims?
Chuck, do, do we have the same problem with the SIMS data for the absenteeism as we had with Fowler?
We did not. So we, we are finding that at the high school level, we see with our freshman cohort that we have quite a few students that are pretty chronically absent. I think the reason absenteeism, I think, is, is truly a district-wide initiative. The work Mike Barth has done at the Fowler, we hope to start seeing that translate as, as soon as this year and definitely by next year. Because if the students who had been chronically absent in middle school, when they get to high school, they, they now have that many more years of chronic absenteeism as, as almost their individual norms, that cohort of students. If we see a reduced number of students coming to us with that trend, I think that puts us in, in better position to work with those students, so. I've, I've got to be very blunt. Our students who are chronically absent at the high school, when we look at their records back through time, particularly the students who have been in the Maynard Public Schools for long periods of time, the chronic absenteeism frequently goes back to elementary grades. So what, what Mike is doing to get that turned around here, it should be happening at the Green Meadow as well. Because by the time a student's 14 and 15 years old, if they've been chronically absent for seven or eight years in a row, it's a, it's a very difficult trend to reverse by the time they get to high school.
I think that that's a very important point that you made, because part of the, looking at the, I was, the Data Action Model that was included in there, part of the DM1, and I don't know if this is part of that, but it asks about, ask exploratory questions for that and, and I think that's, I know that there's been consideration or conversations regarding, you know, supports for, because I know other district superintendents have shared about how to engage families and kind of that partnership relationship and offering resources and support, so that's something I know I would like to hear more about as the, you know, as it evolves through Fowler or even down to Green Meadow. How to make those relationships a little bit more robust to ensure that those resources are available and improvement along the way for absenteeism. But I also had another question, actually, and Jennifer, this might be for you. I remember Mary at one point mentioned that the excused absences seem to vary from school to school possibly. I guess, I don't know in the handbook. Is that something that you'd, is there more allowances at the high school for?
I don't think that that plays into consideration. I'm not sure of the answer. I would imagine that the policies are likely different as kids go through different phases of their school careers. But absenteeism in this case is absenteeism. It's, it doesn't matter whether it's excused or not, so we, we want the students coming to school so that, that we can work with them. And the data point, I know there's been conversation about the different metrics and different measures that are being used to increase student attendance and I think what, as with anything, one, one size is not going to fit every student and every family situation. So we need to use a variety of measures in order to, to encourage families to be able to come to school, to provide supports if they're not able to do that. And so we're, you're seeing throughout the community that we're using a variety of different tactics and strategies in order to address the absenteeism issue. This isn't an accident that the state is identifying this as one of our, not just Maynard, but as a district, one of the accountability designations. And there's a lot built into school attendance that we have talked a lot about at, at different meetings. But school attendance is an important piece for us to consider and if students are not coming, we need to figure out why and figure out how we can address that. So the work that's being done is incredibly important to make sure that our students are feeling safe and secure and coming to our schools.
I know Principal Barth mentioned about engaging the Freingham Court. Be able to just kind of give a high level of how that process happens or at what level?
So essentially because school attendance is mandatory, it's a legal requirement, the district is required to, if a student reaches a certain number of absences, to engage with law enforcement around that capacity. I don't recall specifically what that number is. Eight absences. And so that is a legal requirement that we have. That is generally not the only strategy that is being utilized. It generally has conversations with families ahead of time to make sure that we are partnering as best we can. It just comes to certain situations where that, that is a tool that is being used. I will say that our school resource officers have been incredibly helpful in making sure that we're having thoughtful conversations with students and with families so that they're able to identify and, and partner with us to help families get the resources they need, wraparound services if that's what it is. We have a partnership with FSP, which I'm blanking on the name of that. That we, one of the things that we do is when students are absent, we identify if there are resources within that wraparound program. That would be helpful for families to, to encourage. Additionally, as students get older, we often see school avoidance on the basis of stress, anxiety, significant mental health challenges. And so the work that the Oasis program is doing that we would encourage and, and have asked to be funded down into the Fowler is also an important component so that we can help support students and families. For students in particular who are not coming at the secondary level because of some mental health challenges that they are facing.
Thank you.
What data specifically do you not have, because I'm happy to...
It was just like, so I don't, honestly, it was, I wasn't all, but I know...
We could, we could resend the presentation. We're going to put it online and...
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, this is the one that we got earlier, so I don't know if it's different from the one that was handed out. It was more about, so specifically the goals for the school, like if you want to go to that slide real quick? That right here. So we, for the high school...
Yes, we did make an edit. I had the incorrect goal of, I had literacy and had the wrong year, so it's 2021 in math.
Okay, because I heard, yeah, because I heard you speaking about math and I was, not...
No, that was, that was a last minute when Chuck and I were going over this, actually, this evening. Identified that that's where that error was.
Also, the last page, Science 5 to 12. I think you have, like, yeah, you have two different bullet points.
Oh, yeah.
And we have like one short sentence.
So this is the exploratory question that the teachers had identified through, through their work. So this is the correct information.
Okay, yeah. So that's, what, I think that's why we thought we got a different one, because there were a couple of things that we did.
Just wanted to make sure that...
In terms of, there was another goal.
Can I ask one more question?
Oh, sorry, yep.
On the, 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 the school goals. Again, for Fowler, for social emotional, during 2019, 2020, Fowler will prioritize self-management and responsible decision-making. Can you expand a little bit on what that really means?
They're going to be doing something very similar to the high school in that teachers are going to be given a self-assessment survey. They can use with students. They will then implement strategies within their classroom spaces around those two particular areas. And then self, the students will self-assess. I believe their intention is three times throughout the year to determine increases in those. So very similar. A little more guided by administration in the Fowler versus the high school.
Okay.
And that's part, that's like part underneath the PBIS?
So PBIS is continuing as part of their school-wide components. This is, it's not technically moving into the classroom. PBIS with the behavior matrix, matrices and those types of things. But it's making a, it's making a move to teach specific strategies of skills that they were seeing were deficient within students.
District improvement goals. Do you have SMART goals written for these? Like the, the demonstrate growth in staff and community culture as evidenced by community surveys is...
Do you mean action plans?
Yeah, but also like measurable goals aside from just the community surveys.
So the community surveys are what is going to measure the improvement?
That's how you're going to measure, okay.
And the staff surveys, what is the frequency that those usually happen?
In order to avoid survey fatigue, we are likely going to be giving those two to three times per year.
And that goes to like school level and then there's? Or is it specific to the school or is it district-wide survey for all teachers?
So we're, we're doing surveys that will be district-wide for all of the staff. We are also looking at different data points in regards to staff attendance and other cultural data points to see if we can see improvements in those areas and those are spelled out in the, in the action plans and the benchmarks. Which I can get to.
So first off, I want to say thank you. This is a huge amount of work. It's clearly very comprehensive. There's been a lot of thought that's been put in, not only this year, but previous years that you're already starting to see some return around. I, I don't, I think that it's very, I appreciate that we're looking both at the, where we, we, very important successes and we were all clearly very concerned about some of the potential budget and economic impacts of and as far as charter school caps. So, and I also, so I really appreciate that that work was being done and that it's being done so conscientiously. And that we're seeing that some gains. And what I, I guess what I, what I, and even though we're, there are places that need, you're drilling down, what I see you doing is you're drilling down into the places where we need to be able to drill down and see where our deficits are and paying attention to those and pulling those out so that we, and having clear action plans and goals to, to move that forward and engaging the teachers and engaging data throughout the year and looking at that for all students. Including those subgroups, which is, I, I actually really appreciate that the state's doing that, that they've shifted to that. And then also just recognizing then that the way to get to as, to Chuck's point, that the, that the way to get to the scores being at the higher level is to have those scores be improving. You need to continue to see that improvement. If it's substantial, then you're going to see that turnaround within the next year or two, or three, or, so I, I don't want to put numbers on that when I don't understand it myself enough to be able to do that.
We potentially could see some improvement in the next couple of years in, in those components. And I think you bring up an important point. And, you know, probably the best coach I ever had and mentor said, you do the little things and the big things will happen. We need to focus on the teaching of the students. We need to make sure that our teachers are putting high-level curriculum in front of, curriculum assignments in front of them, evaluating the student's progress on those, intervening when the student is not making progress, extending where the student has already met expectation. And when we do those things, which is what good teaching is, we will then see the big things happen, which are the score changes in that, in that perspective.
And also, we've, we've managed to put into place in the last few years, some of those structures that help get there. So the common planning time really helps to make that happen. And the fact that you've been really looking at having the vertical alignment and how are we continuing to promote that so that we're able to do that work. I also really like to hear, we, I know you've talked about this before, that the departments across the departments, looking at how they're all can focus on a goal and where they can each be taking a piece of that and all be applying. And so I do give a lot of credit to that. I did want to just ask about two things I was wondering. One is, I guess I, I don't understand as well how it works at the high school, so I apologize for my ignorance in this regard, but I know that there was common planning time because there's teams working on things at, both for Green Meadow, they have that, and at Fowler. How does that work at the highs? Where's that space come in at the high school for them to be able to do that kind of work? The way they're assessing and reviewing?
So an issue we run into at the high school is the difference in time on learning for high school students compared to K to 8 students. K to 8 students have to receive, our, the state requires 900 hours of direct instruction. High school is 990. So that 90 hours that's available, K to 8, is not available at the high school level. We tend to do our common work on our professional development days and on our staff meeting days. Our staff meetings aren't as staffy meeting-ish as they used to be. They're really becoming extensions of of departmental planning time because it's in such short, short supply.
I do want to point out too, that Chuck has done some work with his scheduling, with the scheduling of the building to find places where the majority of a team may have some common planning time throughout the day. One, the history department, for example, is looking for this. One member is teaching where all of the rest are off, so Mr. Karajanis is looking for substitute coverage to be able to allow for that vertical team planning. So they've been very thoughtful about using every minute that is available.
So I guess another thing is I do hear that it sounds like IXL is useful for getting at some of the, the kind of rote basics and I, I have heard, kids, kids don't like it that, but like it's I hear it's doing a great ratings. So just saying that, but I, I would like to, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out if it's actually proving to be useful, because I respect that.
So the research around, around IXL and they don't have correlation studies with standardized testing, particularly with the MCAS in terms of the score that you get on IXL versus the score you get on MCAS. What they do show across the country is that students who use the program do increase their standardized testing scores over, significantly over those who do not use the program. That has been shown. What we need to determine is whether it's the right tool for getting at the deficits and the extensions that we need in order to free up the teacher's time to be able to do really thoughtful inquiry-based activities with students. So we are in year one right now. We signed a three-year deal to be able to get some price discounts and do some of this. We are continuing with the STAR assessment program as well to be able to try and show that relationship. I won't say correlation because it's not, it won't be scientifically based. But, you know, to, to try and show that relationship because we do know that the STAR assessment does have a correlation with their MCAS scores. So we are doing that work and if it goes well at Fowler and up at the high school, we may look to have some pieces down at Green Meadow as well. Right now, what we're doing at Green Meadow specifically is the foundations program, which will have that intervention component. And we're using the Symphony Math and the Reflex to be able to do some of that sort of fact-based work at Green Meadow. So we'll see what happens in that capacity. Mr. Barth is very excited. I know he is very excited. I tend to be the one that urges caution.
Yes. Can I ask for a more clarifying question when you're done?
Yeah, is it around what's being said right now? Because I can wait.
Nope.
Okay. So I guess, I just, I, I feel like we, I, I appreciate and just want to underscore that there are, there are heaven concerns and I see that you're taking very seriously the concerns around. I don't think tests are the only thing, but I do think it's a particular indicator when we're doing below that we want to look at. So I appreciate that you are considering that because we are and that that is, you're allowing, like you're saying, those little ways to really focus on the learning. And, you know, I loved hearing about the inquiry-based learning. That is definitely what we want to get there. And, and you have a strategic plan to get there.
And I do think that the assessments themselves, this is the first year of the new science assessment at the high school level. The assessments themselves are helping to drive some of that instruction because they're not asking for rote memorization. They're really asking for that. Additionally, in terms, you mentioned the charter school and the concern with folks leaving. And, and certainly, we will do our due diligence to improve our test scores and our achievement scores. But more importantly, we want to make sure that we have designed an educational program that meets the needs of our students to prepare them for life after high school. So a lot of the work that we're doing around college and career readiness, around pathways, around multi-tiered systems of supports to make sure that all of the pieces are in place to support students through this work. I think those are the things that are going to retain families within the district because they will know that their students are getting something truly special at Maynard. Different than a, you know, traditional college preparatory high school experience. So that is, that is the other part of the work that isn't reflected here, but is an incredibly important part of our improvement efforts.
Yeah, absolutely. And that is getting at some of that same piece of trying to, as opposed to just indicators of MCAS scores, but different learners with different needs and different goals and different ways of engaging them.
Yeah. Turns out they don't take the MCAS after high school, so. We need to make sure that they can get jobs, keep them, go to college, do the things that they want to do. So that's, that's the work that we're really excited about.
And so to that end, there's, one thing is, I do think that, I don't know if it would be at each building to have a night where you can dive into this with... to have a night where you can dive into this with the with parents? Because I do think that in this district right now, there are a lot of parents that would really appreciate being able to hear the level of thought and the plan and the direction that we're going in. This is um, it's, I think, under the, under the the radar and under, feels like it's under the covers for a lot of people. They don't, they don't, they're not recognizing it. So where they, there could be a little more back and forth and just sharing and helping them understand what that translates into the classroom for their child. I think that could just be really useful overall. Um, so I don't, I hate to put, I don't want to, I cringe at the idea of making more work, but I think it would be very fruitful and and useful for the community and working with you all. And then the last thing was just also considering um what you do think you would have for even a range of what you see for your consideration for improvements. I don't know that maybe you're doing that internally and I know I can understand why you don't want to try to um put a number on something for what you think your increase is going to be. But do you feel like you've got a sense of, we want to try to increase by a certain amount? For the goals, yeah.
Um, so really where we want to get um in terms of all of the goals, and I'll talk about the um the the school-based goals, not the district-based goal. Um, but what we want to see is we want to see seventy um to eighty percent of our students um being able to meet those expectations um with the the tier one instruction and then in addition, the additional twenty percent of students with um multi-tiered support surrounding them, being able to meet that. So every, you know, we're we're moving away sort of from go, we want to go from eighty percent to eighty-three percent or or seventy percent to ninety percent. Um, really what we're pushing for is that one hundred percent and we need to see um significant improvements um year to year in order for us to feel strongly that um we've made some gains. A one percent increase is going to be, you know, luck, got the kid on the right day. Not necessarily based on programmatic. So we're looking for five to ten percent um at a minimum in terms of those pieces. Where we get more increases around that oftentimes means that um we didn't have the structures in place at the tier one level beforehand. Um, so now what we're doing is we're filling those gaps in for students who did not necessarily need um the remediation, um but they needed that core instruction, whether it's the academic or the SEL. So sometimes you see
In the first place, they needed that.
They needed it. So sometimes in the beginning of initiatives, you see significant increases in percentile changes. Um, and then it it drops down because what you're trying to change and what you're trying to move at that point is much more granular and much more student specific um in terms of why, why those students or those groups of students are identifying them.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, going back to the social emotional goal and forgive me for being thick. I'm trying to understand what that would look like, like if it's demonstrated, how how will we know that it's been demonstrated? What does growth in um staff and community culture, what does that look like?
Um, so we'll talk about the survey specifically because again, there are other, like the 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 one um data point that we have is staff attendance that, you know, if we have, and there are research studies about this, this is not Maynard specific. Um, when people are coming to your organization, it means that they feel good about being there. And so that's an indicator. Um, and so that would simply be an increase in that in that piece. I don't know that we'll necessarily see significant growth in that area um because it's a rather, it's kind of like the achievement goal, right? Um, so for the surveys, essentially what we'll do is, and we've talked about this as a school committee and there were different surveys that went out last year and years before. Um, so what what I would like to do is sort of bring that into the district level offices where we are sending out um community surveys at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. Um, we would send the beginning of the year survey out similar to um what the school councils have generated in terms of their questions so that we can correlate some of that. Um, but we also do want to use some um research-based questions. Panorama is an organization that worked with Harvard's Graduate School of Education to create research-based surveys um where you can trust the viability of their results. So we'll be sending out a few questions around those. Again, it needs to be targeted and specific so that parents will answer them and we get more than a twenty or thirty percent return. So essentially what would happen is we send the survey out, um and now is about the time where we would be looking to do that because we're well into the year or beginning to get into the year. We look at those results, we identify um what data we can from there, what what is this data showing us and telling us? And then from there, begin to implement interventions um to attempt to address some of those areas that we see as a deficit. We give the survey again in the spring. That would likely be through the school council survey mechanism uh to keep that data collection um solid because we have, I think, two years of data at this point for that. And then we evaluate those same questions at the end of the year. If we do see an increase in uh parents responding and saying, um, and I can't remember the questions off the top of my head, I apologize. Uh, information coming from my school is useful or um
And are those rated quantitatively, like between, you know, between one and five?
So with the surveys, we do one through four because we don't want to give the middle number because everyone picks the middle. Um, so we want to force you to say it's more positive or more negative. Um, so we would do it one through four and then we would identify again what data we take from that. What's interesting um is that even with that data, um, we were, I can't remember what data Mr. Barth and I were looking at. Oh, it was the PD feedback survey for the last Fowler day. Um, that there was a significant number of people who kind of sort of felt it was okay. Um, and so we could have analyzed that data to say, see, we did a great job because it's in this area. But there was enough of people in that category to say, wait, we want to find out who those people are and what their experience is so we can improve that moment. Um, so it's, again, it's not necessarily just we see an increase in people saying, yes, we liked it. It's also making sure that with those categories where people are identifying challenge, we're figuring out what that challenge is and and why, what we can do to address it.
Just on the survey piece, just to piggyback on Lynda, I know DESI because I um has surveys that they use for staff.
So Panorama has them as well for staff. And so, and again, the reason we use those, um, that I would recommend that we use those, of course, we can use whatever folks believe is is valuable um is because that they are research-based, they have been shown their effectiveness. Obviously, the DESI, DESI ones would as well. They're also short, um, it's three or four questions um per survey. So that way we're not um getting at, you know, twenty, thirty questions that people aren't answering. Um, and again, I I I am not a research statistician person, so I don't quite understand all of the metrics. Um, but the um validity of those surveys, even within the few questions that they ask, has been shown and there's studies up on their website.
Those are called psychometric properties.
And so just to make sure, so the 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 survey, you would do one in the beginning of the year and then the same survey? Because I'm just wondering how you would measure the growth of their different surveys?
They're going to be the same survey questions, but what we would do is to use the school council.
To incorporate those questions in of those in that survey. So that goes to families, but staff, how would that?
Oh, staff will have the same survey.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. I was looking at the, sorry, the staff. Um, so you would have one, you'd establish a baseline in the early year and then at the end of the year have the same survey. That would be the growth measurement.
Are you able to do subgroups based on the like the high needs and the within, like have families identify within those surveys? So you could pull out experiences?
We will, we will put demographic information, um particularly within the family surveys. Um, we did that last year when we did the data equity walk. Um, so using some of that data as a baseline as well. Um, it it gets a little more challenging sometimes with um surveys for staff. We're a very small district. Um, folks sometimes feel concerned about reporting and we want to have honest information. Um, so in the past, where I would have liked to disaggregate that data by building or by subject, we have chosen not to do that intentionally um in the hopes of of getting the information that that we want. That does create some challenges when we identify, um, we say, you know, this is indicative of of the staff at Maynard Public Schools, even though we know that the three buildings and the different departments have very different sort of cultures even amongst themselves. So, but we want the information and we want um people to sort of trust that component. The other thing that we will be doing as part of our um universal design process in this is we'll be providing paper surveys as well for staff if they would prefer to fill those out.
Well, I was just thinking that um the district wide versus building, you know, how the unions feel, you know, what they're, uh, they would prefer to have a building on.
So we've spoken with them about the variety of surveys we've done in the past. And there was concern about disaggregating by building. Additionally, when we did ask for that data, but when we did do surveys that disaggregated by building, even in regards to professional development, um, we got lower response rates.
Okay, and that goes to um to all staff, so teachers, parents, custodians, all?
Thank you. I also want to thank Chuck for the turnaround plan work this past year that has led to what we're seeing even now and the district leadership for that too. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you taking the time. Okay. So we have Candy being broken out because it's almost nine thirty. Um, we are now going to move into the new pilot process superintendent evaluation. So Mauro, do you want to, thank you for taking the lead on this.
This is a revisit from our last, where it got bumped from the last meeting, so thank you.
Uh, so in August, DESI re- released a new superintendent evaluation rubric. They developed a an indicator level rubric to pilot for this school year. Uh, this rubric was developed after lots of feedback by school committees and administrators that the previous version introduced in two thousand
Can you hear?
Yeah, just blow the close, sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Uh, introduced in two thousand twelve was too detailed and complex. Um, so using the two thousand twelve rubric resulted in less effective administrator evaluations as we saw firsthand last year. The new rubric eliminates over thirty elements and has descriptors at the indicator level this this year. Even though the pilot rubric is less complex, DESI says that the responsibilities of the superintendent are not simplified. So there are still four current standards, um instructional leadership, management oper- and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. Um, the new rubric is designed around the twenty-one indicators that come under those standards of effective administrative uh leadership. It includes descriptions of a superintendent's practice and specific responsibilities that a school committee can be expected to reasonably evaluate. The old rubric was much more detailed in the element level, which comes under um those indicators, um which is associated with other educator roles. Um, I'm just going to read what the the description that DESI has on the change. Uh, describing practice at the indicator level rather than at the element level acknowledges the following unique components of an educator evaluation process conducted by a school committee. The role of the school committee is, the school committee's role is governance rather than management. A school committee thereby focuses on the what and the why, which is government, governance, of superintendent leadership rather than the how, which is management. The indicator rubric does the same. The composition of the school committee. The school committee as evaluator is compromised comprised of multiple individuals rather than a single evaluator. This demands consensus building, a process made exponentially easier when focused around fewer descriptors of practice. The focus of a school committee. The school committee members, many of whom are often non educators, focus primarily on the outcome of the superintendent's work rather than the details of implementation. The indicator rubric guides committee members to maintain this focus. A public process. The superintendent's evaluation is the only educator evaluation conducted in public. The indicator rubric includes the practices to which a committee can reasonably be expected to have access or insight such that the public process of collecting and evaluating evidence may be conducted with transparency and integrity. Uh, so with with this new rubric, um DESI is also supplementing the model with guidance tools um and a five-part video series that will deal, detail how to implement the evaluation process. Um, and since this is uh the pilot year, the old version can still be used by school committees if they decide to do so. Um, DESI's goal uh with the new rubric is assess them, the implementation of the rubric by superintendents and school committees. Is it accessible and relevant to all involved? And assess the impact of the rubric. Does it promote a comprehensive evaluation of superintendent practice? Does it support consistency and transparency in aspects of the evaluation process, including analyzing evidence, providing feedback and using professional judgment to determine ratings? So according to the DESI webs- website, districts that are interested in piloting the new rubric can register their intent to do so. Um, and with that intent, uh what they'll do is they'll um have an interview or conference call with us um and the superintendent to see how well it works, along with an online feedback survey at the end of the year.
Thank you.
So I think um part of this is, you know, obviously discussion, but we we would need to kind of vote to to figure out whether or not we do want to go through with this.
Because you have to enroll.
Right, yes.
When is that deadline? Uh, is it, or is there?
Um, I'm thinking that, I think there is, but I don't this doesn't say when, when there is a deadline, but I would imagine that they would expect it to be soon because, right.
Like for the pilot, they want to gather information.
And we need to have the goals, you know, the superintendent's goals uh evaluation done, you know.
Soon.
Soon, so. Any questions? I have a lot of information.
No, I don't have a question. I I just think that um having gone through with the old evaluation and the guidance that they, guidance that they give you gave for that one, I I think that I would strongly support doing this more simplified process that we don't get lost in the weeds, that we're really looking at what we need to be able to look at. And uh I think that they they were recognizing that that was not happening with the past evaluation. I also appreciate that if we can have videos to help us.
Yeah, right.
That would be great as well to get that focus.
And we can also do a workshop with um MASC.
Well, I was just going to ask um Mary Jane if they had um discussions at MASC on regarding this evaluation.
John, John actually had a little discussion and and you did a nice job explaining it. Um, really, they just took a lot of the indicators out and made them more broad and I think uh
So it seems again, received more favorably.
I think it was definitely, it'll be a lot easier to evaluate and there's not as much um each indicator, you don't have to put a specific piece of evidence for. So that makes that a little easier too. For you, as far as that goes. I mean, it's really important as far as um when you set your, there's this cycle, the step cycle is very in- important because it's, you know, looking at your goals, assessing your goals and revisiting them all the time instead of having to look at each little piece of 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 evidence, yeah.
So I had a question, just something you just mentioned. Um, so that the new way um would still require SMART goals, right?
Absolutely.
And um the, so the evidence-based piece that you just mentioned.
You still have to provide it.
You still have to provide it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and so it's, now it doesn't take away from from that?
No.
You know, or sharing, because I want to make sure like for the community, that they're still able to have visibility into how that determination is.
It's still the same process. It's open process, the tran- the transparency has to be out there. You have to share the goals, you have to share the um, the analysis.
So it's no really impact to the public as far as what they're able to share?
The same rules apply.
Right.
It's just an easier process.
Well, I think it allows for more responsiveness because you're not getting caught in certain indicate, they were so detailed in particular that it let, it 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 disallowed some of the ability to look back up at the larger picture goals and then be responsive within the needs if you needed to pivot at any moment, using the evidence and data to consider that. Um, so I, that's, that's just kind of my my take on it. I I agree that we do not want to lose, and it sounds like they're focused on that too, any of the transparency um and the integrity. In fact, we've been really trying to focus on that.
Right, exactly. Those are still retained.
And making sure that we we are, we have the data that we need following SMART goals, so.
And I think one of the other great things is that Dorothy Presser was part of this group that put this, helped to put this together. So if we have any questions at all, I'm sure she'd be happy to help us.
I know that this was part of, when we went to the Churn Air course, they were quite excited about when this would be coming out, so.
I know that this was part of, when we went to the Churn Air course, they were quite excited about when this would be coming out, so from a school community's perspective.
So I guess then, if there's no other particular discussion, I'd love to consider motion.
Yeah. So I'm happy to make one because I don't make them ever.
Go for it.
I'd make a motion for us to follow the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty rubric pilot as provided by Department of Education as an indicator rubric for superintendent evaluation to participate in that for this year.
I second.
Any further discussion? Okay.
I'm still looking for a deadline.
Yeah, I was going to say we got to get on it because there's got to be a deadline on me.
I contacted the woman that's in charge of doing that already today, just to find out, like, what do we need to do?
So would you have to, like, sign on, or is this something that Mary Jane would have to?
I don't, well, she sent me, she sent me.
Probably help us.
Yeah, well, she sent me a link, so I'll just, I can just go on there and just see, like.
What does it ask for?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it just sounds like it's intent, but I don't know who it needs to specifically come from, but I can take a look. And then, and then let you guys know.
So that was our discussion, and now we still need to vote. So all in favor? Okay. Thank you very much for leading the effort to make that happen.
You're welcome. Yes, thanks, Mauro. I wasn't going to read through all that.
Okay, so we are now going to move into superintendent search. And I hand it over to Lydia.
All right. So we are well underway in the search for new superintendent. Some updated timeline information. So their online survey has been active since the first of October and remains live until the end of the day, eleven PM on the seventeenth, Thursday, next Thursday. We have focus groups of the different demographics that we agreed on. There are two focus groups next Tuesday. One is for the teachers, paras, ABAs, and support staff. And then the second is for the parents, and that is next Tuesday in the library. And then Thursday, we have focus groups at Fowler for parents and the building and central office administration. Then, and that, I don't know if I said Fowler. That's at Fowler on Thursday, the seventeenth. And then they will go and do a focus group at the high school with the students. I believe they're opening it to all grades. And the final focus group will be held at town hall for all town officials, town employees, and members of the business community who are interested in participating. The data from the survey and focus groups will be analyzed and regurgitated to us on the twenty-second of October, giving us two days to review it before a meeting on the twenty-fourth. NESDEC will come to us on the twenty-fourth. There will be a workshop prior to the meeting where they will go over the data they received. We will finalize our candidate profile, and then we will need to vote on it at that meeting. So that's our next meeting.
So hold on, which one I want to clarify. So we have to have a workshop before on the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Okay.
I can be at the workshop.
That's also town, townwide, downtown event. Downtown trick or treating.
Oh.
From four to six.
Shoot. Yeah.
Townwide trick or treating.
I thought I was so clever too, because, never mind. Okay, so yes, we, because we don't want to be reviewing all the data and stuff in the meeting, so we want to do that ahead of time. Finalize and vote on the candidate profile during the meeting. We also will need to review the candidates who have applied for the screening committee. As I receive any information or letters of interest, I will forward them on, or actually, I want to accumulate them. The deadline for that is October eighteenth. The deadline for rep nominations is Monday, October twenty-first. Once I have those accumulated, I will release them to you. We can review them. We also have to vote on who will be part of the screening committee on the twenty-fourth. Then the screening committee workshops, the first is set up for ten thirty, October thirtieth. It's Wednesday. That's going to be two to three hours long. The second workshop will be November fourth. That's a Monday, and that one should be one and a half to two hours. That's basically just understanding what's expected of us, the process that we're going to need to go through, the legalities of various interview techniques and whatnot.
Those two workshops are for the search committee?
For the screening committee.
Okay.
And then the interviews for the candidates will take place between November twelfth and November twenty-fifth. On the twenty-fifth, we, the screening committee will convene and will determine the five finalists that they are going to put forth to the school committee at the next school committee meeting. So that's where we.
Is that all?
That's a lot.
I know.
Well.
That was a big brain dump there.
Sorry.
No, no, it's a lot. So I'm just trying to digest all the pieces where we need to take action.
So the timeline is posted on the website. We also have, I think, the finalized focus group schedule. Letters have gone out to the various demographics, demographic groups, notifications. And we have also posted the makeup of the screening committee. We have not, I don't know if the document for the screening committee regarding the app, the call for volunteers, has that been put up yet? It has?
Okay.
So there are a couple other documents that have been posted now.
So, personal, thank you.
Yep.
A lot of stuff to keep track on and keep tabs of. So are you, you're channeling Jennifer and Jennifer's?
Anything that needs to get put on the website or that needs to get blasted out, like the invite to focus groups for parents or students. I either send it to the principals if it's a building-specific thing, or I send it to Jen if it's a community-wide thing, a district-wide thing.
Has that been, because I know that a lot of this is time-sensitive, so I don't know what the best, is that the best?
I think it's, it's.
A lot of stuff, a lot of moving things.
A lot of moving things, yeah. I know that Jen is doing her best, but she's also doing a touch of stuff.
Mary was here too, because I.
And I don't, I don't have a complete picture of what Mary has done. We divided up our focus group demographics and our screening committee constituencies, who would reach out to whom. And I believe that she has notified all of the people that needed to be notified and contacted and has even sent invitations to individual people to either participate in the focus groups or to apply for the screening committee.
So I just, I just want to recognize the hour, and I want to just make sure that we get what you need from us. I can tell that you're on top of the process and trying to make sure you get the word out and having these focus groups. So I do just want to, what I understand of this at this point is that when the data is analyzed, we need to be ready to have the workshop on ten twenty-four. NESDEC will present us with the information. And then we finalize the candidate profile and vote on it at the next meeting, which is ten twenty-four.
How long is that workshop?
That'll just be an hour. That'll just be the six to seven time slot. And then if we want them to do a presentation on the process, that would be the night that they would do it. So I need to know if that's something that we're still interested in having them do. So yes, so the school committee will get all of the candidate data on the twenty-second, I believe. Or the profile, the data for the profile. And they will also get all of the screening committee reps and volunteers, so that you have two days to review the information, and then we can vote on it on Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Got it. And then if we want NESDEC to present, it would be that night as well.
Can we, how long do we have to give them notice to be able to present? Are they just available and we just?
Well, I mean, they're planning to be here to help us with the data anyway, you know, and go through the, finalizing the candidate profile. So they were the ones who said, if you want us to present, just, you know, let us know. I think it would, you know, the more time we can give them.
I think it's helpful, I think for the community, because clearly we're kind of navigating this ourselves as well. And I don't know if we're doing the best job, you know, trying to, you know, gather all and making sure it's out there. So I maybe think that it might be a consideration that we would have them on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I think we should just bump something if we do. I'm looking at the rolling agenda.
I also don't, yeah.
So we could, yeah.
I think, it makes sense to me.
Yep.
If it makes sense, I think we should just.
Okay, so you can just let them know.
I think the community would like to hear it too. Honestly, we've been alluding to it, but we haven't had the full discussion. I think that would be very helpful for me.
So that's it for the superintendent search.
One more question that you mentioned, and I want to make sure I understood. So, because I know in our last meeting, or we had voted on the constituency groups. And I thought, because this was a lot of discussion, that we talked about they would pick some of their own representatives?
Some of the constituency groups pick their own.
Right.
Others volunteer, like.
Okay.
Obviously, there isn't an organized group of parents where everyone gets together and then they're going to vote, whereas CPAC is an organized group.
Right.
Where they can pick their representative.
I thought you mentioned about needing to vote on something. Is that not the members for the screening committee?
Yes, we need to vote. We need to vote to approve.
What they pick.
Right, right.
So what they self-select from themselves and it's here it is.
Or we also need to vote to approve the people who volunteered and select them.
Okay.
So we need to, like, we'll have to go through. So far, there haven't been that many people have shown any interest, so we might not even make it to thirteen. I don't know, but. Yeah, we need to approve the school, the screening committee and vote on that to finalize it.
Okay, so I know there's emails going out. What other kind of communications are we able to do?
We've done press releases. Mary has been in charge of the press releases for the screening committee and for the focus groups. She has been in touch with the various senior groups in town. She has been in contact with the public officials and the principals and the students at the high school. I've done ELL, CPAC, teachers, support staff, parents. And I, so like, there's been an email that's gone out for screening committee and.
Yeah, I just saw one come out.
And then I am also posting flyers in various places, like there's one at town hall. And I'm going to post one at the library and where else? I was thinking, I know Serendipity has a public notice board or something, and then several other places. Art space, other places throughout town for people who may or may not read the newspaper, go online, or check the website.
Does Boston Beam have one?
They don't, no. I mean, I could ask. I could just ask, you know, would you mind if I just taped this to your window?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks for all your work.
Sure.
All right, so we have some marching orders for next time around, and we'll be able to get the needs assessment done. Thank you for all that work. I really admire your binder.
Yeah, so if you want to read any of the letters or emails that have been.
It's all right there. You don't want to see it.
Here.
Hand that around.
Love that it was executive function skills being put to use.
She should really teach that class. So we are now going to move into citizens' comments.
I may have missed something, but I, I guess I'm looking for a little bit more information about PBIS at Green Meadow, sort of how that relates to social emotional learning. Just because I feel like PBIS, when I think of social emotional learning, I'm thinking of things like conflict resolution and empathy and self-advocacy, things like that. And PBIS, PBIS like is really good at setting up behavior expectations, but is there like a component of that that teaches the actual like social emotional skills? Or are we addressing that in other ways or?
So I can send information related to the presentation we've given multiple times on the social emotional, social emotional goals of the district. PBIS is an overarching structure that first teaches about what expectations are and makes sure those are clear. But as with any tiered system, it has tier two and tier three components where students who are not meeting those expectations are given additional support so that they can meet them. Those come in the form of a variety of different teaching components, whether it be within classroom spaces, small groups, or individualized. We are currently having guidance counselors going into the, all of the classrooms at Green Meadow and through grades four and five at Fowler to teach explicit lessons on many of the castle frameworks, which are some of the things that you had mentioned. The teachers are remaining in the room at that time so that they can develop the language and the skills to work on students with these. We are also providing tier-two intervention services where we have paraprofessionals pushing into classroom instructions to follow up on those lessons. We have trained many of our staff on social thinking, which is being taught to, again, both to students and to teachers through those classroom lessons. We have sent multiple staff members to be trained through the Rosspring Collaborative and Proactive Solutions for the students for whom behavioral interventions are not, are not just about rewards or a token system, but instead need to communicate why they're having challenges. So it's a comprehensive approach.
Okay, thank you.
It would be great to, if we can, we could get that on the website. And then I always do, it's always great to hear about the social emotional learning goals, because that is one of our goals. We'll see when it might make sense to hear about that, that when it makes sense too, from the point of where things are happening in the year. On the schedule, that we're here to hear about. Thank you. Any other public comments? Citizens' comments, sorry.
Bless you.
Okay. Then we're going to move into members' comments. This includes subcommittee report outs and other activities.
Last budget subcommittee meeting was two weeks ago, and I think we pretty much just reviewed what we had discussed to date, figured out where we were and where we needed to go. We also discussed the green, Green Meadow roof to a large degree because there was so much miscommunication around that and misunderstanding. Our next meeting is set for October twenty-third at seven PM in the town hall. That's the budget subcommittee.
Is that the one that you, I know you asked about it last time.
Somebody gave me a doodle poll, so I think I'm good now. I just got a.
Okay, yeah, you should have been included in the doodle poll.
I was this time.
Okay, yeah.
And so the, I know you mentioned that the RFQ hadn't gone out yet. Was there any conversation about when that would be going out or no?
Well, our meeting actually happened before the Board of Selectmen meeting. Like, it was, it was post-Board of Selectmen where they withdrew it.
Right.
And then our meeting was pre-last school committee meeting.
Got it.
And pre-Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah. Mary Jane, are you still, have you been able to keep meeting with the town administrator with Greg?
I actually went to the town meeting with him. I met with him yesterday. Went to the town administration meeting, but we didn't talk much about, about that. It was with the group. We are talking about November fifth, about the round table with that. And I'm just waiting to hear from Mary and see if she's interested in going that day. And then that's all we've talked about at this point. I did meet with the town manager today. Michelle and I met with the town manager and talked a little bit about the roof. Pardon? Oh, the DPW director. Oh, the DPW director, that was his name.
I was like, who the town manager?
The DPW director, we met with him today and he talked a little about moving, moving forward with the RFQ. So he's, he's on that and talking about hiring the facilities director as well. So we, um, him and I are both gonna be meeting with Greg to get that uh job posted quickly. We really talked a little about, you know, whose responsibility is it and how the budget's gonna work. Um, what else? Is that all we talked about?
Yeah, moving forward with the LED.
Oh, oh, that's right, yeah.
The, the grant that we got from.
Other grant, right.
Yep.
Um, for both here and Green Meadow. Really, it was just about the budget and.
Yeah, so. And, and the roundtable discussion, so I guess I'm waiting to hear on Mary on that. Um, I think everybody's okay. Maybe we just move till six thirty for Natasha. So that's all I'm waiting for at this point.
Okay. Um, did you say November fifth?
It's twelve, twelve.
Okay, good, because I can't do the fifth.
Yes, November twelfth, whatever day I put out.
Um, and do you know what's happening with the MOU? Um, and how that's, is there more, any discussion? Because I'm on the negotiation.
MOU for?
For, between the town and.
Because we're still waiting for facilities.
Oh, so we have to wait for that?
We can't do anything till we get that.
Okay, yeah.
The MOU is one thing, but the, the custodial contract, they won't start negotiating again until January, so.
Right.
Or they'll put their interest in in January to start negotiating for um next year. So as long as we have the facilities to up your own hand before that, um, we'll be able to go through the contract and work through it.
Yeah, we talked about, that's what we talked about today, with the DPW director.
Okay.
So you're gonna just check in with him on the, if we might have any sense on the RFQ? I know that that's been a, a moving target.
I, we, I was, emailed him again, so we're.
I just want to make sure we're not waiting for the facility, to hire the facilities manager first.
He's not, he's absolutely not.
Okay, okay.
He's not waiting for the facilities.
He's not waiting for the facilities, absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
And one last thing, um, it's been brought to my attention by uh several parents in the community that in the past, um, the schools have at least tried to observe Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur by not having any tests or our homework assigned, and that was not the case this year. And nature's classroom took place during Yom Kippur, which um would have prevented a number of kids from being able to go. And um, the parents are concerned because two of them have kids in sixth grade. And next year, their kids will be in seventh grade, and they want to make sure that it doesn't fall on Yom Kippur. So I think we need to be sensitive to that. And um, maybe in our policy discussions, look at creating a formal policy where no homework and no tests will be assigned or given um to be due on Yom Kippur or, or Rosh Hashanah, or Hanukkah, or.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I, I didn't know that was a, um, was a consideration. So we'll definitely look to rectify those things.
Marla, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Uh, let's see. So as uh Karen Heath had mentioned, we had a um CPAC um Communication and Accessibility Subcommittee meeting this past week. Um, and we kind of were talking about what goals we wanted to kind of um work towards, um which we're just kind of starting, was just an, an initial working on um that we're then gonna bring to um the full collaboration meeting um in November um to discuss. And um, so two of the things uh of the goals is um working on the um parent roadmap um to kind of give a good, um, so parents know what, what to expect when, when their child has uh um some issues, either with an IEP or 504. And who to call if there's specific issues. You know, they have a, you know, a bus issue, it gives, you know, this is your first point of contact and this is your second. Um, and then working through that. So um, we're gonna start working on that. Um, and then the next part would be um, um really kind of beefing up the website um so that people have more information. So those are those two things. Um, I went to the Financing Our Future and then the, that was last week. And then I think it was early this week, we did the um strategic goals. Um, so I was late to that one, but they were both good. I went to the Financing Your Future, um, Our Future last year, or two years ago, whenever it was. Um, and it was.
Two years ago, I think.
I think it was two years ago.
Yeah.
Um.
Right, I remember, she's on my table, yeah.
Yeah. And um, so obviously it was similar, because everything was um the same stuff. Um, but it was, you know, the, it was interesting, the different dynamics of the people that were at the table. And, and the things that we talked about were different from the last time I did it. Um, and then the strategic goals, it was interesting to kind of see where Maynard is and where we're um, the, um, kind of where we align with the state and, and our, you know, peer group, um, which actually I was really surprised that.
Our peers.
Some of our, the peers weren't ones that we, I've ever really heard that we've been compared to, so that was surprising to me. Um, so that, that was, it was very interesting. And um, the only thing that I wish um was that it, those two things had been um kind of marketed better to the um, to the community. Because I felt like, you know, when we did it two years ago, we had, I felt like we had a really good turnout. And we had still a good turnout, but I think it could have been better, so. Um, and then obviously, nature's classroom is this week, and my son is there, and I can't wait till he comes home. So.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow. I can't wait. So I'm really looking forward to hearing all the things. I wanted, I wanted to ask Mike, how are they doing?
Well, I heard a little bit of feedback.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I guess some of the teachers have traded off a little bit, and I heard the cabins are really nice at the new place. I didn't even know there was a new place.
Yes, yes, this is a new.
My, my daughters haven't been in, this is, this is all student, the new place, and I guess the food is meh, because I guess it's not the same. So I don't know. That's all against kid, kid relative. Um, but I, and, and Mike did mention he was here, that they looked like they had renovated some of the, I guess, place in Groton versus where Beckett possibly last year.
Yeah.
So.
Um. Yeah. You're done?
Yes, okay. Yeah. Um, I just wanted to thank Michelle and Jennifer for the Financing Maynard workshops. I really enjoyed the, um, I didn't get to go to the first one, um, but I did go to the one about the strategic planning. And I, I think it was really great conversations at the table. Um, Mary Jane participating as well. I think it was really great to, to hear the feedback. And Jennifer, I know you were able to collect at the end. It was really great to, to gather those feedback from, from folks on their um, you know, what they thought on how the strategic plan aligned and all those pieces, and there were some overlapping. So it was really kind of great to see how the different tables had somewhat similar overlap in certain areas. So thank you for putting that together. I know a lot of work went into that. Um, I also would be interested at some point, I don't know, once you're able to digest that, how, I don't know if some of that was incorporated today, but how we can, you know, what we can get from that feedback and um, and share it. I know there was some feedback about like the mission or the, you know, so anyway, just, I don't know what, what your processing would be afterwards, but certainly be interested to hear, um, you know, how that plays into developing or tweaking in any way. Um, um, let's see. Um, I've got the RFQ question. Oh, the, so the school council report out on the, looks like we have it ex, or a, a bookmark for, for October twenty-fourth. But I know, Michelle, this is where timing, I think is, we're gonna get caught into a timing circle again because the school councils, well, I can't speak of all of them. So Green Meadow has not had a budget-level conversation, because I think that was gonna be the October meeting, which we had planned before. But then you got an earlier deadline from November, so I just wanted to.
The October meeting was the meeting where we had the Financing Our Strategic Plan. That was the intention of having that school council meeting, was there. So that's when that was happening.
Um.
All of the school councils were supposed to come to the Financing Our Strategic Plan as their school council meeting principals were asked to notify school councils about that piece. So that's where that information was supposed to um be discussed, so that we could incorporate it into the presentation.
So at the Strategic Plan School Council, then, then we went to, we were supposed to be talking about school-specific.
No, we wanted to not talk about school-specific. We wanted to talk about district-level needs and resources.
Okay.
Because if we keep identifying needs within silos, we're not going to ever look at the entirety of the system.
Okay, so I think we're at, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding is that I, that each school council is supposed to have part of their way in on, on that, and then it was supposed to go up.
Hoping that, that, that session where you got to discuss all the different
Yeah.
aspects of the district-wide goals and then you would be able to have the conversation within your committees. As, one, as a whole, and then also within your committees, so that you could use that information to, you know, kind of guide your requests um with like a better understanding of where we were aligned, where we weren't aligned. So it, it is as a whole district, not just within, you know, Green Meadow, Fowler, or the high school.
I think that's, that was fantastic. I just worry about the timing, is what I'm just trying to point out, because I know that.
The timing, yes, we got.
The eighteenth now is their deadline, and so.
Deadline for the principals to submit their budgets is the eighteenth.
So that's what I just try to highlight, is not that, it's that the opportunity for the school councils to meet again after we've had that is, doesn't look to happen, so.
Because um normally we're not, we don't have to submit our budget. By charter, I believe, we don't have to submit our budget to the town. Um, let's think of.
Town administrator.
Town administrator, sorry. I had town manager in my head.
I see, I know, I don't know.
Uh, to the town administrator until December thirty-first. It was basically, we had to have it there by January first. He asked us for an October thirtieth deadline.
Um, I just think that's.
Really tight, but I will, I will give, um, I did tell him we may not meet the October thirtieth deadline because we had already had our budget scheduled set, um, but in the hopes that we would be able to get it to him as soon as possible.
Okay. So that's, that's the only thing I wanted to highlight, is just that, that opportunity to get that.
Yep.
For them to be able to share, because I think that was looking ahead at our calendar. They're supposed to be able to come present to us about their recommendations on the twenty-fourth, and I don't think that's gonna happen. Because we won't be able to meet.
That's not what that presentation was. It wasn't the list.
No, on, on our annual.
I understand, the Oc- October twenty-fourth was not the presentation of individual school councils' desires or um identification of needs for their individual buildings. The twenty-fourth was supposed to be a summary of the conversations that were had at the October seventh um Financing Our Strategic Plan meeting, where we identified where we were aligned and where we were not aligned. As school council members did not all attend that piece, we now need to revise what that twenty-fourth presentation was going to be.
Right.
The intention was to have the conversation on the seventh, or the sixth, I don't remember what date it was.
And then, and then in this sense, present what, what was, come up with, again, then giving the opportunity, thinking our timeframe was December.
Right.
To, to come back, so.
Need to revise.
Where, where we are.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, so I guess more to come on that. Um, just wanted to highlight that the House, the State House, on October sixteen will be taking up discussions for the Student Opportunity Act. So hopefully, we might hear in the next week, um, something about how that goes. Um, and we have been confirmed, um, Pamela Reiger, the Assavet School Committee member from Maynard, she will be presenting at our November seventh meeting.
Okay.
So that is on the rolling agenda. Um, and that's uh all that I have, and just working through the subcommittees. I know we're working with scheduling, uh, October twenty-second is when we will be meeting, time yet to be determined. But about the CPAC Collaborative Subcommittee with a survey. And then we're working through some dates for the Policy um Subcommittee as well, so those are coming up.
Question, have you guys um done your budget subcommittee? I have no, I haven't had any requests to meet with the Budget Subcommittee yet.
That was gonna be one of my comments.
So I'm just wondering if you had came up with who's going to be on it.
So that would be me and Mary.
It's you and Mary, and what, that was gonna be one of my comments. Yeah, so, yeah. It's usually not just the tri-board meeting, it's been great that we've been having those, but usually they also have the internal.
Okay.
Meeting to look at.
Because it's very, like, just to say from finance, like, I have no idea what you guys are talking about at these meetings at all.
Okay.
And can't really work it into my work, or what you're looking for from me, or what information from me, if I don't meet. Like, just for one example, one of the things on your rolling agenda is that you want quarterly reports. I have no idea what you're looking for specifically to those reports. I could, I could provide a million.
We had really. So I think there's a policy about that. So I think, I, I know that there is a policy actually, because I've seen it, I don't think we followed it very well.
In any case, she was just bringing up a point that could be worked out within the subcommittee.
Right, okay. And I think, whatever, yeah, I, I wasn't aware that that was supposed to happen.
That's why I wanted to make sure I asked at this point, because I felt like we were getting kind of far into the air.
Thank you, I'm glad you said something.
No, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, it's funny, because I'm like, why do I have a comment, it's just more about the budget, and you might not know that. I start getting itchy too around this time.
That was gonna be discussed when we were discussing our committee and liaison roles that we never really quite.
Yeah, I think you guys did have a discussion, I remember being, when we were at the Town Hall, there was a discussion about it. Um, I just thought that it was like, kind of put on hold for a little bit. So I just, I honestly am just, we're getting into the season, and I, I would love to sit down with you guys.
Yep, no. And I think it'd be more, and Mary Jane wants to be there too.
Yeah, I, yeah, I need to know what we're talking about.
And I was checking with Mary Brandt, because she was on last year, so she should be well aware.
Right, yeah.
So, she's just been very occupied.
Kind of following her.
Yeah, she's very, I mean, weddings are very occupying.
That's right, I forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, the, in, no, the, the budget discussion has been pushed up earlier this year for everybody.
That's what, that's what I was trying to kind of allude to in the timing of, like, when people are having the discussions, that they've kind of accelerated um, that what we had originally started thinking about at the beginning of the year.
Right.
Um, so.
Um, I really, I don't have any additional member comments right now. Anything I need to tell you, I can tell you next time around. Um, I've spoken plenty this evening. So um, I think that unless there's anyone else that needs to say, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Out, a motion.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? We're done. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.